We let folks know who is going. I'm not sure that we voted on it, but maybe my colleagues can remind me if that's other. Member Graham?
We will have to take a vote at some point to identify who our delegate is to the Delegate Assembly and a backup. But, and I am planning to attend as well, but I was not planning to try to be a delegate, so. So I think we just need to figure out who all is interested in going and then we can figure out how we make sure we have a delegate.
Good. Sounds good. Mark, Member Russo, present. Member Russo, we're just on the Good of the Order. We're talking about the MASC Conference, November 8th, 9th, and 10th. And I think at a future meeting, we'll vote on who our delegate will be. But until then, just let the superintendent know if you plan on going to the conference, I think. Any other Good of the Orders? Member McGlaughlin?
I just wanted to bring up the, and I know that we have a deadline. I think it's of December, but I just wanted to remind folks that we voted at the end of last session on goals and just being able to report out on our goals. So I want to make sure that we're thinking about that this month as we prepare for reporting out. I think it's in December. Thank you.
Thank you, Member McGlaughlin. Hearing and seeing no other Good of the Orders, I'll go on to the number three, the Consent Agenda, Bills and Payrolls, and our regular school committee meeting from June 12, 2023. Is there a motion on the floor for approval?
Motion to approve.
By Member McGlaughlin, seconded by Member Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. We have reports of subcommittees, Rules, Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from July 19, 2023. And then we also have, I'll give you another second, we have Rules and Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from August 14, 2023. Member Russo?
Thank you. Those are actually not subcommittees meetings. Those were actually special meetings, and they're just filed wrong on the agenda. And I'd motion to table those to the next meeting because there are substantial edits that I think should be made.
Motion to table by Member Russo, seconded by Member McGlaughlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Reports of subcommittees has been tabled till our next meeting. Number five, we have our report of our superintendent, superintendent's update with comments. Dr. Maurice Edward Vincent.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be back. So before I begin my update, I invite you all to join me in a moment of reflection on the 22nd anniversary of the September 11, 2001 terror attacks. It is a very sad day for many Americans, especially those of us with ties to Massachusetts, New York, and Washington DC. The anniversary of 911 is a reminder for all of us that things can change unexpectedly in a moment. We need to remember that over 3,000 individuals who died in untimely death, untimely and senseless death at the hands of terrorism. May all their souls rest in peace and may their loved ones find solace and comfort in their memories. Furthermore, we want to honor all of our firefighters, police, EMS, and other first responders who run into danger when most of us would run away from it. There is no better time to say thank you to our first responders than today. Before I shift gears to discuss our return to school, I invite you all to reflect on a poem which one of my superintendent colleagues shared with me and all of the superintendents in Massachusetts this morning. It's called "The Power of One" by Cheryl Sawyer. As the soot and dirt and ash rained down, we became one color. As we carried each other down the stairs of the burning building, we became one class. As we lit candles of waiting and hope, we became one generation. As we fell to our knees in prayer for strength, we became one faith. As the firefighters and police officers fought their way into the inferno, we became one gender. As we whispered or shouted words of encouragement, we spoke one language. As we gave our blood in lines a mile long, we became one body. As we mourned together the great loss, we became one family. As we cried tears of grief and loss, we became one soul. As we retell with pride of the sacrifice of heroes, we become one people. We are one color, one class, one generation, one gender, one faith, one language, one body, one family, one soul, one people. We are the power of one. We are united. We are America. To honor the memory of all the lost, I respectfully ask that we all rise for a moment of silence to remember those who died on that dark day. Thank you. I thank you again. I am going to shift gears because I would like to take some time to talk about our school opening and just coming back to school. So while those teachers and students reported back to the Medford Public Schools the week of August 28, administrators and new teachers and staff returned the week prior. Central administration was happy to welcome back our administrators together. We're so excited and fortunate to welcome over 50 new staff to the Medford Public Schools community this school year. On Wednesday, August 23, Dr. Bernadette Riccadelli organized a tour of Medford for our new teachers and staff. The tour included stops at Tufts University, the Medford Public Library, and Medford City Hall. This tour wouldn't have been possible without the following individuals, who I'd like to thank by name. Rocco DeRico, Maggie Carril, and Lorena Denise Liza from the Tufts University Government and Community Relations Team. Nicole Peralta, our librarian and head of youth services with Medford Public Schools. Mayor Brianna Longo-Kern and School Committee Vice Chair Jenny Graham. Special thanks to Joseph's Transportation for the coach bus. And Lisa Evangelister, the former Medford Public Schools Public Information Officer, who helped to organize the tour. We are so grateful for our partnerships with our community members. So thank you all for that support during that launch week. Later in the meeting, I will acknowledge many of our new administrators, principals, and staff who were able to join us this evening. I also want to take a moment to talk about the heat. Last week threw us an unexpected curveball with unusually warm temperatures for New England. The heat showed us that there still are several pockets of HVAC challenges that have resurfaced across the district. Our maintenance and facilities teams have been working tirelessly to keep our systems online. And Dr. Cushing will discuss these items in more detail later on this evening. But despite the heat, our teachers, staff, and students made the start of the school year a great one for our students especially. And we're so grateful to all of our students and all of the educators for making it work despite the heat. I also have some good news to share about athletics. We were thrilled to start our fall athletic season with a big Mustang victory. This game took place at home at Hormel Stadium. Last week, it was our first football game, and yes, we did win. We stampeded to victory, as I said, playing on our Mustang mascot, 19 to 7, we played against Brookline. I want to take a moment to thank our wonderful band that played wonderfully. They did a great job. Our color guard with their flags and dancing and all the moves that they had to do. Our cheerleaders who cheered their hearts out. And I want to thank all of their coaches, all of their participation. Even though we may not always think of them as sports, they're all our athletes and part of extracurricular activities with the schools. Medford student Stevens Exeter was even named the Boston Globe's Player of the Week. So that's another just exciting piece of news for our Mustangs. Other early Mustang victories include two 4-0 shout-outs against Chelsea by the girls' varsity soccer team and the boys' JV soccer team. So congratulations to all of those athletic teams that really brought victory last week. In recognition of extraordinary academic achievement, last year's Mustang Girls Soccer Team was one of 317 soccer teams throughout the United States to earn the special recognition. The United Soccer Coaches presented our team with the High School Team Academic Award this month for exemplary performance in the classroom as a team during the 22-23 school year. This is the first time that I recall ever mentioning this athletic academic award. So essentially, they're looking at our athletes. And our last year's Mustang Girls Soccer Team achieved strong academic outcomes as well. And they were recognized along with 317 other teams throughout the United States. So I just feel that's a great accomplishment, and I would love to give all of our athletes a round of applause. Thank you. School meals, I hope, oh, yes, and I see Rheta here. I just wanted to let you know. Rheta Smith, we'll be introducing her shortly as well with our new administrators onboard. But food service, the kids are gobbling up the lunches. They're really happy. It's a definitely new menu. I hope you can look at the menu online. We're really happy. Getting healthy nutrition and the students are happy and they're eating their food, which is wonderful. So we're really optimistic and we look forward to hearing much more good news in our food department. I also want to just share with the community that the Medford Public Schools has adopted a new messaging system. I did make, mention this in last week's communication, but we have migrated to Blackboard Connect. And so when we migrated and we did, we sent out the first message on the new system, we were initially told that it would look the same. So that our understanding was that it would be seamless. You would receive it in your inbox and just receive a new message. And it was quickly brought to our attention that it was saying no reply at notification. So for some people, it ended up going into their spam boxes. So once we got that information, we wanted to let everyone know that we migrated to a new system and that that signature that said in the past, no reply at notification.com, will now have a normal email address. So again, we have migrated to Blackboard Connect, and this new messaging system will work collaboratively with our website and our other platforms. So I just wanted to notify the committee and the community of that.
Yes. Member Russo?
Yes, I just wanted to, I've received, I think, my first email from the new Blackboard system today from the principal of the high school. And it was like we stepped into the next century. It was clear. It was formatted. It was beautiful. And I know that in the past, you all have worked on your Friday updates and your actual update was nicely formatted. But then we had to send it out and it turned it into plain text and looked not what you wanted. So I was extraordinarily happy today with the message that I got, that I'm pretty sure it came out of Blackboard. So I want to thank everybody that did that work because I know it's not simple, but it makes a big difference. As a parent, when I received it, I could read the whole thing in a short amount of time, and I didn't get lost in endless text. So it was fabulous. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that feedback. We hope that as we continue to work on our official communications, that everyone will see the quality of communications improving and the presentation of the communications really being beautifully presented as well. So that's going to continue to happen with the new platforms that we have, which now talk to one another. So thank you for that. Last week was a celebration of Brazilian Independence Day. That took place on Saturday. And Medford hosted it at the Andrews Middle School. We want to thank Mayor, the Mayor's Office, the Board of Health, and Marilia Barossa and Samia Bennett for helping to organize the event. And we are very lucky to have a thriving Brazilian-American community here in our city. So I hope they had a wonderful Independence Day this past Saturday. Also, for the community to know, we have several curriculum nights coming up. Tomorrow, September 12, there will be curriculum nights at the Roberts Elementary School and the Mistetuck Elementary School. September 13 at the McGlynn Middle School. September 14 at the Brooks Elementary School and the McGlynn Elementary. September 19 at the Andrews Middle School and September 21 at Medford High School. And they are being held from 6 to 8 o'clock. And we have on September 19 as well, Mrs. Michele's class and Mrs. Capraro Gentoso's classroom, Miss CG's classrooms at the Brooks School. They will be holding their open houses on September 19 from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. I just want everyone to know that on Wednesday, September 13, is our first kickoff meeting for the Medford Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC. They will be meeting in person at Medford High School at 6 PM. Also, this Friday evening, September 15 until September 17, is the celebration of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. So we wish all of our Jewish friends in the community a very happy New Year as they begin that celebration on Friday evening. And the additional updates will be in this coming Friday's memo. So I would like to pause there and ask, are there any questions based on what I shared this morning, or this evening, I should say?
Thank you, Dr. Edward Vincent, for great updates. I think you said 6 to 8 for some of the, for the open houses, but some might be 5:30. So I just make sure you look on the school website.
Okay, definitely look. As, as I introduce, if the principals are here and they heard the incorrect time, please let us know. Thank you.
And then if I, I just may, we have Brazilian Flag Day, and the two ladies that you referenced are connectors and liaisons for the city. They, they speak Brazilian and they're out building trust in the community and helping families with any needs they may have, such as mass health or, you know, finding any type of services that the city offers or that outside agencies offer. And I mentioned it specifically for not only the people watching, but the principals and assistant principals that are in the audience. Because if you have families that need support, the city of Medford has, I think we're up to 10 community connectors and liaisons. Brazilian, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, there are a number of different connectors that we have. So please lean on the city for some support if you need it. Thank you. Member McGlaughlin?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, regarding the cultural brokers, the community liaison, two, I guess, one question, one comment. One is, I think this is fantastic and much, much needed and eager to work with them from the school perspective as well. If a family is needing help or their assistance, can, can we understand the process or, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know. The, the school obviously has their own supports too, but through the city, we have our Office of Prevention and Outreach under the Board of Health. So you would call, you could call either number and reach out to them that way. Or we have our multilingual resource lines where you can speak any language, leave a message, and somebody will return the call that speaks that language to, to provide you assistance. So there's many ways to, but not many people know about it. And obviously, we want the people in need to know about it. So we're trying to push it out as much as we can. So any help, and I know the superintendent's great with doing that through her Friday updates, which she was a leader in making sure those were translated. And that's one way we've been able to partner to make sure the word's out on not only the school offers, but also with the city's offering as supports for families, children, seniors, all of the above.
Thank you. And just to follow up, several of them are also Mass Health Certified Application Counselors.
Multiple are and a few, and a few more. I think the rest are getting trained currently.
Yeah, so that, that's great. So just for accessing Mass Health for families within our schools as well. I'm a Certified Application Counselor in my day job, so I just understand the responsibility involved in that. And the folks that here are doing it, I think it's super important for the community to know about. So especially if there's a Mass Health redetermination process underway right now where everybody is getting re-determined. And a lot of people are losing insurance. So it's super important that we share that. Thank you.
Yes, we can, we can definitely be explicit about that in this Friday's communication as well to let, let the community know. So we can work together to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have a welcome of all new administrators to the Medford Public Schools, again, presented by Dr. Maurice Edward Vincent, our superintendent.
So this is, I'm really excited. We have a lot of people here tonight because we have a lot of new people on our team, which is wonderful. And so there's really no particular order, but as I call you, I'm going to ask you to come forward. So the entire committee gets to see you and the community gets to see who all the new administrators are, the new members of our team. So I'd like to invite the Andrews Middle School Principal, Mrs. Jennifer Sting, to come forward.
Yes, perfect. The light, the microphone's on.
Perfect. Good evening. I'm excited to be here again to say hello. The Andrews Middle School started our first week, actually, our first day with some balloons and music and welcome back celebration despite the rain. The students really had a great first day. This past week, we introduced Start With Hello, which is an outreach through the Sandy Hook Promise Collaboration. And this week, we also started our map testing for ELA. So our students are working hard at that. I guess I will say, one of the most exciting things is that we welcomed 10 new staff members to the Andrews Middle School. So it's been exciting to watch them already become integrated in the Andrews community. And I don't feel so alone being the new guy on the street. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with all of you moving forward.
Thank you. Can we have from the Brooks Elementary School, the new assistant principal, Ms. Sheila Burke? We just have to wait for that mic. Yes.
Member McGlaughlin, could you turn on the mic if you could? I mean, John?
There it is. There it is. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to say that I anticipated a warm welcome just from the interview process at the Brooks Elementary School. And I was just overwhelmed with the warm welcome that I got. I was completely blown away. I feel like I'm already a member of the Brooks family. The, the staff, the administration, the families, the students have all been so welcoming, and it really is a wonderful start for me. I've had the pleasure of greeting families at the Loop in front of the school, which has been a highlight of my recent, my past assistant principal position. So I am delighted that I still get to be outside and greet students and families. I've been working diligently in the cafeteria, supporting students and helping them to set some procedures in place and, and really enjoy their, their lunchtime because I think that's important. And I look forward to supporting Shannon and everybody at the Brooks, and I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. So Medford High School, Ms. Marta Cabral, the new principal, and then we have three brand new members of your team. So Marta, what would you, yeah, as long as the light's on, you're good.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for welcoming me again. I am so excited to be principal of Medford High School, and I feel honored to be part of the Medford community along with the caregivers and students that I interact with each day. A couple of things about Medford High School this past week, there's definitely some there's definitely some energy back in the air, I would say, in the high school, especially in the mornings. It's great to see everyone come in and all the kids interacting with each other in the mornings. And just really excited to be there. Despite the heat, we had an attendance rate on Friday after our third day of heat of 94%, which is something that we are extremely proud of. Our PTO, amazing PTO at the high school, served ice cream for all staff. I asked them, I think, at 10:00 in the morning and by 11:00 in the morning, we had ice cream for everyone that we served at the end of the day. Athletics kicked off this week, which I was extremely excited for, being my first time going on the soccer field as well as the football field. And we had a couple wins, which was really exciting. The superintendent mentioned that we had the football player named in the Boston Globe as the athlete of the week. We know we have a lot of work to do at the high school. We're really excited, we're eager. There's a lot of positivity in the air and we're just ready to get to work. I'm excited to also introduce our new team as well at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Marta. So we have three new members of the high school team. So I'm going to ask for Ms. Allison McDonald, Mr. Patrick without a K, Hamilton, I love to say that, and Ms. Sheila Freitas Haley. So these are three new assistant principals at the high school this year. And Allison, since I mentioned you first, you can have the floor first.
So I'm Allison. It's nice to see, meet, meet some of you again. I've, I've met some of you already. It's been an amazing two weeks, three weeks. I, I am happy to come to work every day. I love the kids, the smiles in the morning. It's my favorite thing in the morning to go outside and say just good morning to all the kids. And hopefully that, you know, sets their tone for the day. And I have been welcomed so warmly and I already feel a part of the community. So thank you all very much.
Hi, I'm Patrick. Thanks for having me. I'm thrilled to be in Medford, thrilled to be assistant principal for your kids, for my kids now too. I've been a teacher for over 20 years and making the switch over to being assistant principal, it has been, believe it or not, super fun. The kids are a joy to be around, you know, 99% of the time. And I feel like we're really starting to gel as a team and, and I think we can make a difference here. So thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm thrilled to be here.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hello. It's nice to meet all of you. I look forward to working for your community. I've worked in two districts my entire career, 20-plus years. Fall River, Massachusetts and Somerville. Please don't hold that against me, the Somerville thing. I, I want to retire a Mustang. I was at that football game and to see one of your athletes, be the Boston Globe athlete of the, of the week is just fantastic. And I've been welcomed warmly by everybody in Central. Marta's amazing, Chad is amazing, and I am so excited and look forward to retiring a Mustang. Go Mustangs.
Thank you. Roberts Elementary School, Mrs. Michelle Crowe.
Hello, everybody. We've had a great start at the Roberts. I think the number one thing that sticks out for me right now is just the sheer level of excitement. Not just excitement with the kids. So my kids are sitting in the classrooms and they're excited to be there and they're participating, they're writing and they're doing math already. And there's just this level of engagement that is so impressive of the kids already. My staff, the staff is ready and they are super positive right now and ready to tackle the new curriculum that's in front of us. And just ready to get right down to work with all of their students. I think the way in which I've been accepted by my families and the school community has just been amazing. I held a popsicle event right before school started. I had hundreds of families show up. We ran out of popsicles at quarter of seven. It was a full family event for me. So my husband and my kids served popsicles to everybody. It was a great event. And then just the parent coffees that I've had and the participation and the families are so ready to open the doors to the Roberts to get everybody involved and really bring some activities back to the Roberts. And they're just ready. We're ready to kind of bring on the new school year. And we're just, we're excited, we're really excited. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle.
Ms. Crowe, if you see a nine-year-old blonde, ugly mullet, please make sure he's in line. Thank you.
We have one administrator who couldn't be with us today, Mr. Gerald McHugh. He is our new interim Director of Finance. But he is another very welcome, positive addition to the team. I also would like to, at this moment, welcome Ms. Gabby DeCosta, who is our registration specialist at the PIC. Gabby?
Hello, thanks for welcoming me. I wasn't expecting this since I started in June. Since June, we have received over 300 registrations. And the last three weeks have been very, very busy. And, you know, staying afloat, you know, we're getting on track. And district has been a little bit less busy, but it's good. We're welcoming families from all over. And yeah, thanks for welcoming me.
Gabby, can you share with us how many languages you speak?
I speak four languages.
Can you share with the committee your four languages?
I'm French-Canadian, so I speak French. My parents were Portuguese, Spanish, and French, yeah, and English. I forget about that one sometimes.
Gabby, thank you. Thank you so, so much. I wanted to make sure that everyone knows who Gabby is and she's able to, you, you use your multilingual skills every single day in the PIC. So thank you so much. I would also like to introduce Mr. Thomas Dalton, who is our new Communications Director.
Thanks, Dr. Vincent, and good to see you all. I've had the chance to meet most of you at this point. Started earlier this summer, but really excited to be here in the district in this new Communications Director role. There are so many good things going on in Medford Public Schools. Makes my job pleasantly simple. My job really is just to take the good news and get it out there. And so that means that we're, as the superintendent already discussed, updating some of our email systems, making sure the website is in great working order. I'm crazy about the website. It was very exciting for me when I came here to see the terrific website and excited to continue to build on that, that work that's been done. I know very diligently over the last couple of years on the website. And just in general, working with all of the great leaders and educators across the district, like I said, to keep getting the good news out. So excited to work with this committee. Already having a great time working with the school community. And, you know, look for me in your inboxes. Check your spam folders maybe. And we'll, we'll make sure we keep getting the good news out. So thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. And I'd like to invite up, last but definitely not least, Mrs. Rhonda Smith, our new Food Service Director. Come on up, Rhonda.
Hi. I was told that I did not have to say anything. So thanks for that. I'm really happy to be back at Medford Public Schools in the Food Service Department. So there's a lot of work to be done, but I have gotten a lot of nice feedback from kids, parents, administrators from every school. So that's been really reassuring. And, you know, just if people are happy now, just wait.
Mayor?
Member Russo?
Thank you. So I'm beyond thrilled. I mean, we finally have universal free meals and that's been something I've been harping on continuously for nearly six years. So I'm very excited that that's there. I look forward to hearing how that affects your budget. And, you know, you have enough work to do today, but someday it'd be nice to know how that, because I've certainly received questions, like how does that change how much money is there to spend in the Food Services Department? That's not a question for now. But I do want to also say.
Depends on how many meals. It's how many meals are.
Okay. So hopefully more people will be eating more meals.
Yeah.
So I did receive several unsolicited texts. And I, honestly, I did not think that already the food would be better.
I didn't either.
Because you started like, what, eight weeks ago, six, seven weeks ago? Not long ago.
Yeah.
And, but I did receive several unsolicited texts from parent friends of mine who were like, I don't know if it's possible, but my kids have already said the food is better. And then someone who's a para at one of the elementary schools says, yeah, there's, there's fresh food to eat, like fresh fruits and vegetables. And I just was like, dearly in tears with happiness. It's like, if after less than two months, this is what we have moved towards, I'm beyond excited for what's to come. So I'm, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Happy to do it.
Thank you. So could we just give a round of applause for all of our new administrators? Thank you for coming out. Thank you for joining Mustang Nation. We're so glad to have you.
Yes, thank you for joining us tonight. And we have high hopes. I, I know we're going on to number three. I see our President of the Union here, who I know has a long commute. So I don't know if we want to move anything out of order. I'm not sure.
Air?
Member Russo?
Motion to suspend the rules and take item. Did I find the item number?
Four.
Item number?
Operations update?
Oh, I thought it was going to be one of these.
We could do it under a number four.
Oh, then to take number four.
Out of order.
Out of order.
Second motion by.
Dr. Cushing.
Oh, Dr. Cushing, we're going to take.
Out of order.
Number four, out of order. Operations update by Dr. Peter Cushing, Assistant Superintendent Operations, Enrichment and Innovation. We know this has a large part to do with the air conditioning. We have the Union President here to speak on that. So thank you.
Do a roll call or just?
Oh, it's a favor to take number four out of order.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Dr. Cushing?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the school committee. If you just give me one moment, show the screen. It's been a while. All right, so I'm going to cover several areas that were detailed in the report that I issued to you last week. So transportation first, all of our bus drivers. We are thankfully fully staffed. We are going to be issuing for the first time ever, Medford Public Schools identification badges to our bus drivers so they're easily identifiable when they enter buildings. We conducted ride-alongs on elementary school buses last week. 13 buses, school leaders, engagement specialists as well. The bus I had had six full empty rows behind me. Students were overall exceptionally well behaved and very respectful and the driver was phenomenal. Currently working with a new manager at Eastern Bus for the first time since I've been with Medford Public Schools. So that's a definite plus. She did start the week before school. So she is getting up to speed very quickly. We're also currently working to add a new stop for privately, a private new after-school program that's on High Street. poses a challenge because that bus may be facing some overcrowding on. So because of this, it's a good problem to have that our kids have after-school care available to them. One other thing, met with the Chief of Police, as we do every other week. He is requesting anyone interested in a traffic supervisor position that should be posted on our Facebook page at 7:00 tonight. So if anyone's interested, it's a great position through the city of Medford that is a really, has a lot of benefits to it. And late buses will be beginning tomorrow for the middle schools. So that's a quick overview of transportation. We've also identified some overcrowding areas and we're actively working with the new manager to fix that. So maintenance and cleaning, district-wide summer cleaning really involves floors stripped and waxed, bathrooms deep cleaned, floor tiles replaced at various school locations. Primarily, the Mississauga had significant floor tiling done and replaced. Security office at Medford High School is being moved to be more centrally located with our students. Science lab's had some HVAC work done in the computer controller that needed to be replaced. High school offices are being updated. Principal's office, as an example, and Assistant Principal's office being converted from a conference room to spaces that can be really used for meetings and the opportunity to engage with community members. We're currently doing an assessment of the Brooks turf and will be working to bring in the repairs to have it re-seamed and re-sanded. For those of you who are aware, the Brooks turf was installed about six years ago. And we're going to make sure that that is part of our update moving forward, not update, our annual maintenance program moving forward. The Brooks and Roberts, through grants of the CPA, had playground money allocated as well as ESER money allocated. So we spent $32,000 between all of those funding sources to make sure that the playground equipment has been updated. It is finally shipping. It has been a high level of consternation getting the playground equipment actually shipped to us. And just the delays, I guess, post-pandemic, I honestly can't say because we haven't gotten the answer. But it is finally being shipped. It should be at Medford High School. And now we're actively hounding for an install date so that it doesn't just sit on a loading dock for an extended period of time. It does need to be installed by professionally licensed installers. It's not something we can do on our own liability reasons. McGlin Playground, we went out to bid. We have a bid secured and we're really excited that this project is about to lift off. And so it's really awesome. I want to thank Member McLaughlin, Member Graham, Shanene Peliquin, the mayor, and Alicia Hunt and everyone else on the committee. Can't name them all right now, but really thank you, thank you, and thank you. And just really phenomenal. I do want to say Denise DeJardin for being the, the teacher's representative who saw the project through as well. All throughout the district, we had rugs cleaned and shampooed. We're currently going through a on-bill repayment of school lighting upgrades. So the Andrews is completely done from previous work, but we're currently working to have Medford High School have Buildings A and C. Right now, it's parabolic lighting, so it focuses down and doesn't really provide much lighting in the hallways. And the hallways have kind of a dungeon feel to them at times. So hopefully this lighting will really give a better feel to the hallways as students move through them as well as other areas of the building. So that's on-bill repayment with MassSave, saving us money and not costing us anything. I believe the electric rate went up about 30% last year. So this will help us as time moves forward. We're also reviewing options for a work order system. We're looking at two right now, but considering probably a third option coming up. One is called Operations Hero. Then we have our school today, which right now manages our facility for rentals and things like that. So that's kind of our league leader and we'll kind of consider another one as well moving forward. Technology, mass communication system, as was mentioned. It connects with our website as Final Site was our website. Blackboard and Final Site merged. We also purchased a three-year license with Smore so that our principals, athletics, and central office can deliver Smore newsletters. That also has an integration with Blackboard Final Site. And we're really excited about that. And as Thomason, Superintendent, mentioned, we are working through that No Reply app to hopefully get that resolved as quickly as possible. So we also have implemented Incident IQ. There are 7,600 devices across Medford Public Schools right now and 98 pieces of equipment. That might be a, one of the smart touchboards or projector or various things like that. So we have more projectors than that throughout the district, but we're still loading equipment in. But 7,600 devices across the district, Chromebooks, desktops, and MacBooks for teachers. So it's a help desk and a technology management system to manage our extensive equipment. Huddle cameras, huddle, they'll be installed in the Field House for basketball and other events, basketball, volleyball, and also at the Field of Dreams and Carmel Stadium so that anywhere in the world, parents will be able to log on and view the air child's athletic events. So that's a nice little upgrade there that we're working on. I do want to say, just real quick, going back, I do need to thank Kim Miles for all the work she did to help deploy Final Site, Blackboard, the messaging. And Thomas, as he came onboard, the project started previously, but those two really helped me to land that project successfully in a really short runway. So just really excited about that. Security, we're doing, we've done a comprehensive review of all security procedures and security devices across the district. As the committee is aware, we're working diligently to make sure that we can make things happen on that without going into. As the committee is where we're working diligently to make sure that we can make things happen on that without going into too much more detail for security reasons. All principals have been trained in what's called the standard response protocol. It's moving away from the, the older language that shelter in place and various other things like that that might be confusing and fear inducing for a lot of families. Shelter in place comes from Cold War era atomic concerns. So we're moving from that and we're moving to the I love you guys foundations. Hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, shelter. Essentially mostly would be a hold or secure for things that we need and. Oh, it didn't move forward or it went back. I apologize. So all principals were trained. We're going to deploy training for all staff throughout the district. They were given a brief introduction on day one. We are having ongoing meetings with the Medford Police. We've initiated meetings with Medford Fire. We're revamping our fire drill procedures to account for all staff and students as they evacuate the buildings. That may not have happened on the first, however, it is going to be moving forward. Our principals and assistant principals were assessing and will be making those changes as we go forward. The, all principals and assistant principals are being issued confidential immediate response protocols so that they can deal with things in a standardized manage manner. We've initiated school and district Christent teams to be formed at those levels. And I'm going to be working to, with our municipal partners to create a municipal safety council for the schools that would meet quarterly. Training is scheduled for September 30th on the half and all remaining half days for our door monitors in the areas of CPR, standard response protocol, and various other trainings to make sure that they are well versed for their roles. Human resources over 70 teachers and paraprofessionals, seven school leaders that you met this evening. Our director of food services, can't say again enough how awesome that is personally. Communications Director, interim director, finance registration specialist was June, but still. And other security monitors, just to name a few. We've got some custodian jobs posted as well for anyone who may be interested. Food services, so we have a new for services director, as has been previously mentioned now three times. Universal free meals, I would actually ask for this body to motion for the Medford Public Schools School Committee to issue a formal letter of thanks to our state delegation. I can't tell you how important this is for our students and how critical it is in an era of foods, food insecurity. And this, it, it's going to offer so many opportunities for the Medford Public Schools and other schools to really be in families' corners in helping their kids get those two important meals a day. And we have exciting things to come, but that's something I would request that the committee works on. We have a comprehensive equipment audit going on. Turns out there's a lot of equipment that needs to be addressed across the district and we've already started on that work. We've already got purchase orders moving out. We're replacing six of our milk coolers. We're examining a gradual shift to electric cooking over gas as we need to make replacements. We have an improved menu and we have new point of sale machines within online portal called School Cafe. All of your balances for families that may have been zeroed out last year have been restored and moved. If anyone sees an issue, please feel free to contact me or meals@medford.k12 MA.us. We also have, for the first time ever, a climate controlled food delivery van to actually move food between buildings on hot days so it doesn't spoil while in the back of the van. So that was purchased last March and has been now put out into service after some minor modifications last year by our CTE students. Again, need to really thank Kim Miles for all of her help in getting the new point of sale, all the data uploaded for that. So she's been really helpful to Reda and to everybody to make sure that that has been taken care of. Alright HVAC. So HVAC stands for Heating Ventilation and Air Conditioning. During the pandemic, the work was focused on air movement. A significant amount of the equipment at Medford High School was not functional at that time. That, that much of the work during the pandemic was on getting air A, moving and B, filtering it. The filtration at that time was recommended to be upgraded to MERV 13 filters. That is above the specification of almost any of the equipment in the district. And I say almost because I'm not 100% sure on the science lab that was updated in 2013. I also do want to make clear to everybody that I am not an HVAC expert. However, since last March or so, I have done a lot to really educate myself. So those are two really critical things. It's air movement and air filtering during the pandemic. It was not the conditioning of the air, be that heat or be that cooling, right? In 2010, the Environmental Protection Agency banned R22 refrigerant as an environmental, I guess, hazard, if I can go that far, in new construction of HVAC equipment. In 2020, they banned it completely for production and importation. So what does that do? It makes the existing supply, alright, a scarce resource. The product has escalated 10-fold. A 30-pound can that may have cost $100 before may now cost as much as $2,000, which is 20-fold. But you know, we're seeing in the neighborhood of about $1,150 to $1,400 to, to get those. The, to recharge parts of the system. Once again, not an expert, but talking to the people that work for us and our contractors as well as our maintenance team that has been, done a great job. That may take four canisters for one recharge of a system. So there are skyrocketing costs for those existing reclaimed supplies. The only way that you can get R22 in the United States now is it's either existing or it's been reclaimed, recycled, and I'm forgetting the third one. But that's what it is. In 2019, we spent about 208, sorry, about $206,000 to repair a number of compressors and other components of the equipment at the Brooks, the Roberts and the Missatuck. That same $206,000 and talking to our consultant over the, on Friday for about 45 minutes driving in Thursday, it was Thursday, would probably cost north of $700,000 for the exact same repairs. Alright, so the exact same repairs, you're talking between three and four times as much for those repairs. Knowing that we had an issue with the Andrews system, not fully knowing the extent of any other issues that we may have had, but knowing that we had an issue with the Andrews system, which is part of the building, the future schools, 22 years old. It's not, it's not like a, it's not like a classic automobile. These are building systems that will eventually need to be replaced. Why do I say that? Well, Alicia Hunt was really good when I started talking to her about how do we really look at and address these problems? She committed $50,000. We, as a school, looked to find, for the overall cost of the study. There were a couple of add-ons that we pulled out of ESER funding in the neighborhood of about $14,000. And we expect that report, I was hoping to have it about this week. It'll probably be the first week of October after receiving an update from the organization. But it's going to give, having this assessment done is going to give us the best information as how to replace not just the Andrews system, but all of the other aging systems across the district. And while we may not be having major issues right now at say the Missatuck and the Roberts, the Brooks overall is doing fairly well, but there is one ACU, air cooled chilling unit, I think, or air, air cooled compressor unit. I apologize. It's in the report. I don't have it in front of me. So four of six compressors and I think ACU one have gone down. The McGlinn has a lot of work that needs to be done. The, there are two systems that cool most of these buildings. Not, there are two systems that cool all of these buildings with the exception of Medford High School and the Curtis Tufts, sorry. And the first is what's known as a chiller system that moves cooled glycol liquid throughout that system. And then gets blown, the air gets blown over through the unit ventilators. Our maintenance department has done an amazing job maintaining and keeping these things running to a certain degree. But there comes a point of capital investment. The B2Q assessment report is going to give the Medford Public Schools in the city of Medford the understanding to actually know what we need to do to fix these challenges ahead of us.
Eric. I'll go first. I just want to, thank you. I just want to be clear. So the report will include both the, how to get all the parts that are in this report functioning. But it will also include, which is really, I mean, they're both interesting. But you know, we, you can't just replace the R32 with something else in the current system. You tear the old system out of the building and put a new one in is what I think we've talked about in the past. So you know, when I did the math and assumed $50,000 per piece of equipment for each thing here, it was nearly one and a half million dollars just to get the current equipment running minus charging it. Which makes me shudder a bit at what it would cost to tear these systems out of the schools and put new system. I mean, I just, that, that report is going to tell us in today's dollars what that would be.
I asked Director Hunt, Member Russo, just for a couple of sentences exactly to understand what the assessment at the Andrews will do. And, and that was commissioned, I don't think you have a date in this flyer, but this has been months in the making. So they're doing an assessment, obviously, to see where the Andrews is at, which we then can implement in the rest of our schools that were built about a little bit over two decades ago. And an assessment comparing the cost benefits for placing the HVAC system with code compliant equipment versus energy efficient versus all electric, including all utility rebates, professional cost estimator will provide a solid estimate for each option. And two options in kind replacements and, or number two, heat pump, partial electrification replacement is, is option number two. And then I just wanted to add that for several months, myself and Director Hunt, and now we're taking the city's building facilities maintenance director, it's a new position the city hired. Dr. Cushing's been in, in the loop. We've been meeting with the Greater Boston Labor Council monthly along with three neighbor, two to three neighboring communities. And we're trying to partner with the Greater Boston Labor Council. And Alicia and I have been pushing at those meetings that the project we apply for the infrastructure money on is the systems at the schools. So fingers crossed that we can get this assessment, we can apply it to Medford Public Schools, join forces with a few other communities, plus the workforce development aspect of what will make the grant very strong with the Greater Boston Labor Council. And we do have high hopes that we'll be able to get this done. Unfortunately, and from the chair, you know, I sat in my office last week and just felt completely terrible. But what was going on our schools, getting texts from my daughter and, you know, emails from parents. I know we all felt the same way. So this is something that is a priority along with security, along with Medford High School. There's a number of them, along with the McGlinn Playground. But this is something we do, are committed to getting done and working towards. So I just wanted to throw those two cents in because I asked the same question from Director Hunt earlier today.
Thank you very much.
And to address your first point, I will be completely honest and just say that I don't know how viable any repairs might be based on the age of the systems and that throwing good money after bad.
Yeah, we need new systems. Yeah. Member McLaughlin.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two questions, comments. Thank you, Dr. Cushing, for the report. I'll start with the HVAC situation first and go backwards. Can you address for the community how and what remediation efforts have been applied for helping our students and our teachers and our kids in those settings when it is unbearably hot? So I know that there have been some. I just don't know that the community understands what some of those are specifically. And I'm wondering if, if you might be able to share. I know that there's been some cooling rooms, for example. You know, some of the other examples that you might be able to share of what has been done. Because you know, if it continues, hopefully it won't, we're, you know, coming into the end of September, but we'll probably have a few more hot days. What sorts of things have been happening to help our families and kids and staff?
Yeah, so we purchased 8,000 bottles of water. We added slush to the menus both Thursday and Friday, thanks to, again, Food Service Director Reda Smith for making sure that those things were added as quickly as possible and then she was delivering them. We had the custodians go around and at night open the windows. We were planning to run the equipment so you can open the dampers full, alright, and just run the fans. And the idea is to suck in outside nighttime air. The problem is we weren't really able to do that because of the high humidity levels. So it would have sucked high moisture air in that would have, that would have caused us to do it. We, we deployed fans as, as we could. It was limited. I'm not, I'm not going to stand here and tell you it was, we moved classes as best we could. There were teachers who reached out to help their peers to say, hey, I'm in an air conditioner room. I'm free this period. We also moved our phys ed classes to rather be in a stifling gym, Andrews and McGlinn, to then move them to the auditorium or say it might be better to be outside. But, you know.
And thank you. And if there are students, may I follow up, Mayor, to that? If there are students and staff for that matter that are experiencing symptoms of heat illness, heat stroke, anything like that, you know, what can be done? I know for myself, I went for a walk on Friday. I did not anticipate coming back in the afternoon. I came back in the afternoon for the walk. It was like a five mile walk halfway through the walk. I honestly didn't think I was going to make it and I started shivering, which is a clear sign that something's wrong. If you're shivering in the, you know, 90-plus degree heat. So how are we sharing with families and staff and others how to recognize examples of heat exhaustion, heat stroke, referrals to nurse, nursing, like are we doing anything that can help remediate any of that?
I know the superintendent did put out a message to the community last week. Our nurses office, every single nurses office, his staff with a minimum of two nurses, save for the Curtis Tufts. So they're available to help families. But I do know the superintendent put out a message last week as to that as well.
Sorry. So if there are issues like that, they can go to nursing, let staffing know, go to nursing. And nursing should be able to help support our families and staff.
They're, they're the best able to assess.
Right.
A student or staff member's health.
Yes, and then in addition to, for the heat, a lot of the classrooms and hallways used reduced lighting, shades down. We recommended kids wear loose, light fitted clothing. And no one was being encouraged to go outside and like run like you're running in the, you know, running a marathon. It was really if they went outside, they could get some fresh air, but not to overexert themselves. But if students didn't feel well, they definitely had access to water to stay hydrated. And if they needed water breaks, they definitely could go and get that. And then the nurses again were there. So everyone really tried to not have the students become overexerted or to overexert themselves. And if that were to happen, the nurses were able to support those students.
Thank you. Mayor, if my.
Yes, Member McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just had another question if I may, if, I don't know if there are other colleagues with their lights on.
Graham's right after you, this question.
Okay, thank you. The other was the safety protocols, the, going back to that. I know that you mentioned school safety teams and district wide safety teams have been established. And maybe at some point a municipal safety team, which I think is a good idea. For the, for the safety teams that currently exist, I'm wondering about those students and staff who are sort of outside of the typical box, if you will, and how, or whether there are representatives on those safety teams and district wide safety teams to address, for example, our English learner population, our students with disabilities, our students with special healthcare needs. You know, thinking about all of those ways to address our varied student population. Are there folks that are?
Yeah, absolutely. On the, on the templates that we've provided, there's room for people to add. But we've also made sure that our director, people personnel services or, you know, EL coordinator, Mr. Tisher or others are definitely going to be included in that so that we don't, so we hopefully can minimize any blind spots we may have. Also looking forward to being an active part with the universal safety committee to make sure that we're having those conversations as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Member Graham.
Thank you. I just, well, I'll circle back to HVAC in just a second. But the, the conversation about the Brooks field, I just want to reiterate for those of us who are newer to the conversation. um, for those of us who are newer to the conversation, that when that field was installed, um, it was after years and years and years of failure of what was supposed to be a place, a green place for kids to play, and it was actually a brown place for kids to play. Um, and the PTO made a significant investment in that project. They did not pay for nearly anything that led up to the actual, like, total cost, but they did, uh, they were asked to contribute fifteen thousand dollars out of their raised funds, and in doing that, um, we were promised that that field would be maintained on the same contract that the field at the high school is maintained. And it seems like maybe we're on a better path to that now, but that predated me being on the committee for, so I've been here for four years. So for, for more than four years, that field has not been maintained, which means that we are doing it to ourselves again, where we are not maintaining things that are going to be expensive and cause problems, like that field five, six years ago, however many years ago it was, it was like a hundred thousand dollars then. So we're, we, we can't keep doing this to ourselves. It's not wise financially. It's not good for kids. Um, the other thing I will say about that project is we were also promised there was a phase two of that project, which was to address, um, the runoff that comes down the hill so that, um, our own runoff down the hill did not, does not, further deteriorate the field with all the, as rainwater washes things off. To my knowledge, that has never been done. So my understanding, and I could be completely wrong, was that we were just waiting in a queue somewhere with the DPW, and they were going to come do it when they could. I don't even know if it's on the DPW's list, and it's just, the list is seven years long and we haven't gotten there, but that hasn't been done. It's going to continue to run and wash dirt and everything else down the hill, so it's going to continue to be a problem. But, um, we, we have to, we have to start doing something differently because this, this lack of maintenance is just expen, it's wildly expensive to not maintain big, critical pieces of infrastructure. Um, and, and we just like, we can't, we can't keep doing this. Like, I almost fell out of my chair when I saw that there were twenty-nine failed compressors and more equipment than that even that is broken. Like, that didn't all break last week. Like, this stuff has been broken, like, since forever, I'm assuming, and I don't even know. But I think, um, we have to do a better job of understanding what our maintenance issues is. Our, like, this committee has been asking this question in a lot of earnest for the entirety of the time I've been here. Like, we've been talking about what's the capital plan, what are the capital needs? Like, none of that work has happened, so I'm not, sadly not that surprised that we have twenty-nine failed compressors because we've never had an inventory of, like, what is the equipment that needs to be maintained and, and is it being maintained? So we have to do something different than this. Like, this isn't sustainable. Um, on the, on the subject of the, the PTOs, I am going to do some thinking about how to put some parameters in place about gifts from the PTO that are well-intentioned, um, that require parents to open up their checkbooks and their wallets and give and donate to the school because the school committee does not have the funds to, like, meet all the needs that a school, we would want a school to be able to provide. Um, and that there has to be a process where we identify what the district's responsibility is to those pieces of equipment when they are donated, and we don't have, it's sort of like the Wild West. I was so happy to hear that the rugs were cleaned because that was another big investment um, that has happened in various schools over the years because the rugs, you know, they don't last forever, and the PTOs are, their, where parents are spending money contributing with the best of intentions, and it's our job to maintain that, all of that equipment, um, or, or say that we won't. Because I think the other thing that happens is over time, people forget, like, did we buy the sand for the sandbox? Did the school buy the sand for the sandbox? Who buys the sand for the sandbox? Whatever it is. Um, I think there just needs to be a clearer, uh, accounting of what is going to happen from a maintenance perspective when these kinds of gifts are made. Um, because it really, like, I, as someone who personally did a lot of fundraising that led to the ability for the Brooks to be able to pay fifteen thousand dollars for that field, I cringe each and every time I go and see the field getting worse and worse and worse. So I will do some thinking about how to introduce a resolution on that, um, coming up. Um, but I would also like to make a motion that the administration create an excessive heat protocol that outlines operational adjustments to be enacted in the case of excessive heat, um, and that outlines any equipment needs and related costs, um, to this committee no later than January twenty-eighth.
May, uh, Mayor? Member McGlaughlin?
Uh, may I suggest, um, an amendment?
Yep, I'm going to ask Member Graham to just read that one more time, so we can catch it. Um, and I have it written down, so I can, I'll just send it to Paul. Send a picture. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the administration create an excessive heat protocol that outlines operational adjustments to be enacted in the case of excessive heat that also outlines any equipment needs and related costs no later than January eighth. And part of my rationale is, like, we have a protocol of what happens when it's cold. When it, when the real field gets to some certain number, the kids don't go outside for recess, right? Like, we have protocols. We knew this heat was coming, and like, yes, water is important and slush is important, but where were the fans? And, like, if we had working compressors, this wouldn't have been an issue in most of our buildings. But there is no air conditioning in the vast majority of Medford High, and that's not changing between now and the next time we get a ninety-degree day. Like, it was oppressively hot. Um, you know, I think the President of the Union is here to tell us the same. Like, it, it's not conducive to learning. Um, but the, this is our reality, and we have to have a better plan than just water and slush. Um, and we shouldn't have to create it when we hear there's a ninety-degree day coming. Like, this is, we should be able, the school should just be able to, like, whip out their excessive heat plan, just like they do when it's cold. Um, and I, I think it's past time for us to, um, be able to, like, review that as a committee and understand, like, what the, what the capital needs are to support it. Thank you, Member Graham. Member McGlaughlin?
Thank you. Um, I was gonna just, uh, suggest a, an amendment, um, that it be, that, uh, family and community outreach is included in that plan. I know that we obviously have meetings and we discuss it at the meeting, but it's not always proactively, um, sent out to families and communities. And I think, you know, when we come up with, uh, uh, an excessive cold plan, um, that we're really thinking about how we're pushing it out to the community as well. Um, so I would just ask that it have, you know, a community, family and community engagement aspect to the motion.
Motion by Member Graham, as amended by Member McGlaughlin. Second, if you could call the roll, Member Russo?
Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Kratz?
Yes.
Member McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Member Mastone?
Yes.
Member So Yes? Mary Longo-Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero on the negative. And, Member Graham, I don't know if you have further comments, but through the chair, I'm asking maybe one of my colleagues to put up another resolution to, and I don't know if we choose the same date, but I discussed this with Dr. Cushing over the last week. Um, and the city is willing to help support the school system with a ticketing reporting system. I know we've talked about it in the past. We've suggested it in the past. I think it's long overdue to have a reporting system for building and grounds so that we can, and the school committee can obviously access. It can be an internal system, but you need to, we need to know what's being done, what's being reported, how long it's taking, what products we need, what products we have, um, and so much more. So if, if one of you put forward that resolution, um, and fully stating that the city is on board to help, we have a C Click Fix system that I've looked into, and we can support the school being on that system. Um, and it can be an internal system. I know there's other options out there too, but we already pay for our C Click Fix system, and we desperately need, need something, so.
May I make a point of inquiry on that?
Yes.
So are you, um, suggesting that the city will pay for working with the schools to help create this?
We, we use the C Click Fix system, so I just want the schools to assess if that's what they want to use. It's, we can make it an internal C Click Fix system through ours. We already pay for it. And our, my staff, um, my Director of Community Affairs and the Administrative Assistant are well-trained, and they train all of our department heads and employees who need to use the system, and they are, I, they're willing to help train, um, whoever needs to, to know how to use this system in this, in the school department.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that the, uh, metro public schools will work with.
Oh, please. No, go ahead. I'll suck in it.
Thank you. Uh, the motion is to include an assessment of this, of the schools going on to the city's C Click Fix software for the purpose of tracking our facilities.
And offering training, uh, with the schools to use this, implement the system. Yeah.
Yes, that.
Yes, training helps. Uh, yeah, second.
Can I offer a friendly amendment, Member Graham? Um, can we just provide some space for the school district to, uh, identify another system if they think that that is a better plan? Uh, my concern with C Click Fix is it is outside the scope and scale of, like, everything we do in metro public schools. So, um, we don't use that system today, and so we're talking about having to, like, convince a whole bunch of people who don't use the system to use the system because it's only as good as the information coming in. So I guess my thought is, like, I don't want us to sort of demand that it be that system, but just that the request is that you tell us what the system is that you will use and that it will, and demonstrate that it will, um, provide us the information and the traceability to the kinds of requests, um, that I think we're looking for.
And training and professional development.
Yeah.
I have something I can read. Do you want me to call the roll?
Please.
Who first and second?
Motion for approval as, as amended, C Click Fix for another system.
Great. Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Kratz?
Yes.
Member McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Member Mastone?
Yes.
Member So Yes? Mary Longo-Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero on the negative. The motion passes. Member Graham? A, yes, please.
Good evening. Um, before I make my statement, I'd like to extend my thanks, uh, to move the agenda around. I do have a trip to Leavenst, though, uh, apparently Route Two might be, uh, off limits at the moment, so I might be staying in Medford anyway. But, my name is Anthony Gien, and I am the President of the Metro Teachers Association. I have come here today to speak on behalf of my members, and as an extension, as always, uh, for our students on the conditions under which we were expected to function last week. This heat wave, which has been stated it was not unprecedented nor unexpected, uh, caused unfair and unsafe conditions for both students and staff who were not only asked to perform teacher-created tasks, but all classes of the freshman and sophomore English were expected to take the first round of MAPS testing last week, uh, which is a very large source of our data on student performance. And now this data has to be looked at with an asterisk in a footnote stating how students perform under conditions uh, that both OSHA and the National Weather Service have categorized as, quote, "temperatures that pose a serious risk for occupational heat-related illness and injury." Teachers recorded temperatures ranging from the high eighties to the low nineties in their classes throughout the district. Teachers at the high school, uh, dealt with no water provided in the break rooms, and several rooms that lacked any windows or source of ventilation. Children at the Brooks Elementary School were moved from their classroom due to mold concerns exacerbated by the heat and humidity. Physical education teachers were given minimal guidance on what to do with their classes, adding to the frustration and confusion amongst the students and staff. And as of today, unfortunately, I can confirm that a member had to, uh, leave work today and be admitted to Winchester Emergency, uh, to be treated for vertigo, which, uh, I have been given permission to say the doctor said was most likely due to the condition under which that member was working. Uh, meanwhile, most of the practical assistance and relief, uh, we received from each other, members received from each other. Uh, teachers of air-conditioned rooms, which at times still measured in eighty degrees, uh, set up makeshift signup sheets for periods of their room did not have a class so that a small percentage of people could move their class into more hospitable conditions. Fans were brought in by, uh, from the homes of educators and school nurses and shared out. And while I am moved by the mutual aid that the educators of Medford provide for each other, it should not be their burden to do so. The district knew the heat was coming. The district knows more heat is coming in twenty twenty-four. And the district has shown its ability to improve conditions in buildings. Uh, this district must have a plan to mitigate the next heat wave and take steps outside of the long-term plan for new building construction to ensure that its students and its educators do not risk their health simply by coming to school. I've shared a chart with all of you marking the unsafe temperatures, and it is my sincere hope that we can implement a plan of action for the next heat wave. And also, as I was, um, sitting in this chambers, I was informed that we may have some results for the Brooks on the, uh, mold testing, and I would like those, uh, results to be made public if possible. Thank you very much.
Just want to thank the President of the Union for coming forward. Um, if there's no other questions from the committee. Member Graham?
Is there an update on the classrooms in the Brooks that were displaced?
Uh, yes. Madam Superintendent, do you want to speak to that or? Okay. Uh, so the classrooms should be able to return by the end of this week. Uh, there was, uh, our uni- universal environmental, UEC, universal environmental, I'm blanking on the C. They do all of our environmental testing, asbestos mitigation, various things like that have come in and said that, um, the, the problem is no, is, is not going to be a problem by the end of this week following the proper mitigation techniques that have put in, been put in place. We emailed all the affected families, uh, earlier today, uh, Principal Demos as well, and, um, uh, have, I believe we forwarded an email to the committee as well. But all those classrooms and spaces should be back to full functionality by the end of this week.
And when, I, when was it initially reported? I think the smell is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I can't, I honestly can't speak to a smell or anything like that. I know that, um, when equipment was moved, when equipment and furniture was moved away from a wall, there was some concern at that point. Um, and then we contacted a contractor, I'm not going to use their name just because we contacted a contractor to try to come in, address the issue. Um, they were unresponsive, um, so we contacted UEC for them to give us advice on how to best handle the situation. Then, um, we used the testing from the previous, from the first contractor. Once they did respond, they took a lot of time to get back to us over the weekend. Uh, we had our people at UEC, AMAR, um, who reviewed it, gave us what we need to do for further cleansing and further cleaning of those areas, and that those should be back to, once again, full functionality by the end of this week with students returning.
Member McGlaughlin?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cushing, for, um, standing up here and answering all our questions. It also, I just also wanted to ask, there was, there were some folks that reached out to me with regard to concern for students who, um, had, uh, uh, medical needs um, that were in classrooms that, um, did not have either fans or, um, air conditioning, from what I understood. It was, I think, an anomaly based on the location of the classroom as well and a particular floor at one of the schools that was affected based on that, um, location. I guess I'm wondering what the protocol is for, I understand that administrators might not always know or understand who is or isn't medically, uh, complex, and so what would the protocol be for staff, um, teachers, paraprofessionals, what have you, to let folks know if there are, uh, students with medical healthcare needs that really, um, are not, uh, just cannot stand, you know, the heat in, in any circumstance?
Right, I just want to clarify. This is a question about the heat versus the question on the Brooks.
Yes.
Okay.
Separate question altogether.
Yeah, I think, um, before I had an answer for that, I really want to make sure that I spoke to Avery Hines. Um, but that, you know, um, that any, any student who has an issue with the heat um, would probably be identified by a health plan.
Uh-huh.
Uh, students on five oh fours, IEPs, health plans, other things along those lines are, uh, identifiable in school brains by a separate icon on the side that teachers will, teachers do review. Um, and so that's one way for them to, you know.
So an individualized healthcare plan, which, just to be clear, is not the same as an IEP or a five oh four, but it can be an addendum to those, potentially. Yeah. So an individualized healthcare plan. Okay.
But it's also, um, the nurses who have an amazing job, knowing their high-needs students. But it's also the nurses who have an amazing job, knowing their high-needs students and those students who need an extra level of care to be able to make sure that they're in contact with teachers, in contact with principals, assistant principals, and the families as well.
Okay, thank you.
Name and address to the record, please.
Good evening, Maria Janeska Machelli. I live at the Brooks School, three eighty-eight High Street, room one one four, which might sound familiar. It is one of the classrooms that had to get relocated. I'd like to thank everyone for their response, once it was brought to the attention of the district, especially Mrs. Demos, very on top of it, what do we need? The other teacher was not able to make it tonight. I guess my question is, at this point, we have the results. There is a plan in place. We hope to be in our classrooms by the end of the week. Who is doing the cleaning? Like, what, what will that look like?
So for what we have right now, depending on the space, what was identified, some areas will definitely be able to be addressed by the custodians, the custodial staff. And we just need to get a little more information to figure out if we're going to use that other specialized vendor. Because based on the quality of the test, there were several spaces that were identified as no mold. So it was in very isolated spots and the numbers were small numbers based on the information that I heard today that it was not hitting a threshold. And I was, he even gave the example of, in anyone's house, you may have that level of mold just, just because it just happens environmentally. So the chlorox, the, you know, the bleach, the water, making sure things are dried. So there, there, a lot of this was said to us verbally because we were waiting for the, the information. So it'll, it'll be a mixed.
Okay.
It'll be mixed mitigation strategies. But I am pleased to report that, you know, those spaces, your space and the other space, it was, it truly was isolated, even though it was seen. But it was out of an abundance of caution that we really, once, once we heard that that's what was seen, we were like, okay, we're not leaving the children in that room, nor the staff. Let's take them out and make sure that we get everything back to normal. And again, from this particular summer where there was so much rain and excessive humidity, I think it was just, you know, the combination just promoted that, the growth. I mean, I, I'm not an expert in that area, but that's, that's what they were saying happened. And again, that building, similar to what member Graham was saying earlier about the field, those who are familiar with the Brooks, it's on an incline and the hill is on the hills, the High Street side and the Alston Street side.
Yes.
So with all of those classrooms being on the ground level and all the rain, so, you know, we're, we're speculating. It's not confirmed, but that's, that's what our thinking is. So the mitigation is definitely going to be done.
Okay. I just want to feel confident when we do move into those classrooms, as I'm sure Ms. CG and any other staff,
Yes.
that we are safe.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm sure all of you, like, these are my babies, many of you know me through the years, this is my thirtieth year starting. So I've had six hundred babies come through and I keep them safe, we all do. And I want to be able to feel confident that we are going to do that when we're ready to move into that classroom. And I need to, to hear from all of you that that's what will happen.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that's why we had the testing done, because we didn't know, once we were given the information last Wednesday evening, if we had had, and I was at the Brooks on Wednesday, talking with all the new parents.
And you saw my excitement.
Wonderful, it was a happy day, I was in your classroom, so you can only imagine.
And that excitement deflated and as, by three or four, when Mrs. Demos asked me to go to her office, I thought I was in trouble. Could you imagine? I think I'd rather have been in trouble than hear what she had to say, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor.
Member Russo.
I'd like to make a motion that the report, when received tomorrow or whenever it is, be placed somewhere on the school website for anybody interested, rather than having to make a request for any of that usual rigmarole to get documents, that it just be put somewhere. We did that with the H, with the, the air exchange during the pandemic. We have that on the web, it's probably still on the website somewhere. So if we can find a place to prop it, so the curious who want to learn about what all that stuff is, don't have to hunt.
Second.
Motion by member Russo, seconded by member Graham, all those in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion passes.
Motion to take twenty twenty-three dash eighteen out of order, suspend the rules and take motion twenty twenty-three dash eighteen out of order.
Second, we're suspended already, so we'll just take twenty twenty-three dash eighteen offered by member Graham, be resolved. Superintendent will provide an inventory that includes operability, known issues, and date of last maintenance of each air compressor and other HVAC equipment by building at the nine eighteen twenty twenty-three school committee meeting. Member Graham?
Yep, I think about, about half of this is our, has already been provided to us, but I'm particularly interested in just having some sense of, like, the, the maintenance that has been done on various pieces of equipment and if it's not functional, like, when, how long has it not been functional for? I don't think I understand that, and I'm sure that others feel the same way. So I would like to just get that follow-up that gives us some real transparency into what we're dealing with, with these twenty-nine-plus compressors and, and how long that they've been broken for.
Not, not looking to prolong it, but could I just have until the first meeting in October? It's already Tuesday. It took a lot to build this report, but just if I could have until the first meeting in October.
So I'll amend that to ten two.
Motion by member Graham, as amended, accepted by member Russo, all those in favor?
I.
All opposed, paper passes. Motion revert to the regular order of business?
Actually, sorry, one more motion. I like the motion that, that any new purchasing of equipment, that a protocol be devised to ensure that it flows into our tracking systems. Doing all the legwork of finding all the equipment, that was the end, there was a period there, sorry. But doing all the legwork to find all the equipment and put it into a database is one thing. But I sign the warrants every week and we buy an awful lot of stuff. And once a year going and seeing if we can find it isn't, isn't a robust methodology. I do worry about whether our accounts payable or receivable or whoever it would be, do they have the information to make that decision to make a purchase flow into our inventory system? But if that doesn't happen, then our inventory system will forever be semi-useful, I want to say useless, but, so that, that's my motion, don't ask me to repeat it too quickly here.
Could I ask for clarification? The inventory system that you're asking about is to be part of, whether it's the C Click Fix?
Correct, whichever one we pick, you know, somebody's going to be running around trying to identify what we already have for equipment to put it in there. Otherwise, you can't say this piece of equipment's broken. And so as we're buying new equipment, the serial number, the date we bought it, the expected maintenance timeframes, the when will it die? All that stuff should be going into this system so that as, for six years now, we've asked questions, as member Graham has said, like, what's the list of equipment, what stuff's going to break next year? Like, none of this is unpredictable, we all have water heaters to break on a seven-year schedule, like, better than Christmas showing up. It's like, they just always break. So we have lots of equipment that's functional today that we can very closely determine when is it going to be dead. But we're just walking into tomorrow, all of us, through no fault, frankly, of anybody here, we're just walking into tomorrow, no idea if there's going to be another boiler that goes for a quarter of a million dollars or if the rest of the compressors in one of the school are going to die. And that stuff's pretty predictable. But getting your data good is a pretty massive project. And so I feel like stopping the, stop making the problem worse before you worry about getting it better. And then stop making it worse by having new purchases mandated, you know, as we buy new Chromebooks and new MacBooks. They need to go into the system before they go out to be given to people or to installed. So that's, Siri thinks I'm talking to Siri, so, that's my motion.
Motion by member Russo, seconded by member.
Second.
Graham, all those in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion passes. Motion to revert by member Graham to a regular order of business, seconded by member McLaughlin, all those in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion passes. Number three recommendation, this will be a quick one, to approve the twenty-two thousand two Infinity vehicle donation to the automotive shop of MHS by Ms. Alicia Hunt. I'll let Dr. Bruce Adler Vincent, Superintendent of Schools, speak to this. And I also know that Ms. Hunt, Director Hunt of our Planning Development and Sustainability Office is on the Energy and Environment Committee meeting tonight, so she can't make it in person, but she's generously donated the vehicle for the shop to work on, so.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Director Hunt for her generous donation to Medford Public Schools, to our vocational programming. She donated, again, a two thousand and two Infinity for, I guess, the students to work with, and it's a substantial donation. And we're very generous, appreciative of her generosity. And so I'm asking the committee to approve that donation to the Medford Public Schools from Director Hunt.
Motion for approval by member McLaughlin, seconded by member Hayes, all those in favor?
Do we have to take a roll call because there's money?
Yeah, roll, okay, motion for approval by member McLaughlin, seconded by member Hayes, take a roll call.
Thank you, member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Cratt?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Masto?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Lungo Kerr?
Yes, seven, the affirmative, zero, the negative, motion passes. We're onto number five, our summer programming update by Ms. Joan Bowen, Director of Student Services, and Mr. Paul Texera, Director of EL.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Paul Texera could not join us, so Ms. Galusi is going to tag team with me tonight to provide this update. So welcome back, it's nice to see everyone. We just wanted to provide you with updates regarding some of our summer programs that we ran this year. It includes the special education, extended school year services, credit recovery, our EL summer enrichment program, as well as our Jump Start Instrumental Music Camp. The first program we'll be talking about is our ESY programming. This year, the Special Education Department, through the team meetings and the team process, recommended two hundred and forty-four students for extended school year services. Of those two hundred and forty-four, a hundred and ninety students attended the ESY program during this past summer. The Extended School Year Services provide a wide range of services throughout the summer in four- to six-week programs for students who are at risk for substantial regression or experience difficulty with recruitment of previous learned skills. The dates and times, the special education programs were housed at Medford High School, the Missatuck Elementary School, and the Roberts Elementary School.
Next slide, please.
And here's a breakdown of the six-week and four-week programs and the dates and times that those programs ran. Our six-week program is typically our substantially separate programs for our connection students as well as our access students. The four-week program is also our elementary and middle school access. It varies, some students have four-week programming and some students have six-week programming. And then we also had a four-week, three-day program, which was for our MEAP, our language-based programs and our learning group program students. And it was also for tutoring and any related service programs, so that could be counseling, speech, OT, PT, et cetera. And this is just a breakdown, the next slide, please, of the enrollment per our special education program and how many students attended the program this year. So we, we had a wide range of students for tutoring, we had seventy-one students this year, as well as thirty-nine students in our connections pre-K through five programming. And this is our ESY staffing for the year, we just broke it down, we had one program supervisor, we had twenty teachers, two of those teachers are reading specialists, we had thirty-five paraprofessionals supporting our students this year. Two were actually assigned to provide support to students in the Summer Fund Program. We had seven speech therapists, we had one occupational therapist, one occupational therapy assistant, we had two physical therapists, one school adjustment counselor, eight school nurses. I just want to caution, it wasn't eight at one time, they rotated throughout the, the summer, and so it was eight in total. We also had two BCBAs who worked during the program and two vision specialists. Do you want me to go through the whole slide deck and then have questions at the end?
Mayor.
That sounds good, member McLaughlin?
I would actually prefer if we could go segment by segment because they're so distinct. Was that okay?
Questions?
I, I do.
Member McLaughlin?
Surprise. Thank you, Ms. Bowen, for the report. I have a couple of questions, one is, so for the ESY program, how long are the days for each of those programs? How, how long is?
They're typically eight thirty to one thirty.
Okay, that is for the six-week and the four-week?
Correct.
Eight thirty to one.
Yep, and the tutoring is also within that timeframe as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, so if I, if my math is right, I'm seeing, so on average, we're about eight hundred students with, that are getting IEPs or?
Correct, it's about eight thirty-three, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. So two hundred and forty-four, so roughly about thirty percent of students are getting ESY services.
Yes.
So if it's two hundred and forty-four students and seventy-nine staff, I added up the staff too, right? So two hundred and forty-four students and seventy-nine staff. I'm just wondering, is one program supervisor really sufficient for two hundred and forty-four students and seventy-nine staff?
So.
Hundred and ninety students, right? Hundred and ninety students?
Yeah, a hundred and ninety students attended this year. So it.
When did I get two forty-four?
It was total students recommended for ESY, but only a hundred and ninety attended. So last year, we did have two program supervisors, and they felt that they were overlapping too much. It was maybe too much staff, we look at it every year based on the numbers and who is supervising. And Kim Clinton did it this year again, and she rotated throughout the building. So she would start off at the high school because their program started, you know, a little bit earlier and then went and make sure she checked in with all the buildings, everyone had my cellphone number as well as her cellphone number if there were any issues. But it seemed to work this year, but we will reevaluate on a yearly basis.
Okay, well, that's good news. All right, thank you.
Thank you, please continue.
Okay, thank you. The next summer program is our Medford Credit Recovery Program, and this was for our high school and middle school students who needed to recover some credits throughout the school year. If you look at the breakdown, the high school enrollment had seventy-seven total students and they offered a hundred and two course enrollment, or there are a hundred and two course enrollments. In the middle school, they had thirty-five students and there were forty-nine course enrollments. The high school had both math, English, science, and social studies sections, and the middle school had math and English for that credit recovery. And on the, the next page on the enroll, enrollment information is the breakdown of each subject that was offered as well as the amount of students that were enrolled in each of those classes. And that's credit recovery. If anyone has questions.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes, I do, thank you. So a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and twelve, it looks like, students were enrolled in the, in the credit recovery. And do we know of those students, how many were required to pay? And you may not know, so if you don't know, that's okay.
I don't know, but we can find that out for you.
How many were required to pay for the credit recovery and how many were able to, you know, be offered assistance or scholarships? That would be super helpful, so maybe for the next meeting, if that's okay with, is the next meeting okay or?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's fine. I can, I can reach out to the program supervisors.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding credit recovery?
Okay, so on, on behalf of Paul Texera, he had his English Learner Summer Program again this summer. It was very successful as it always is. So there was the K to five enrichment program that was housed at the Missatuck Elementary School. There was the STEM enrichment program, grades five through six, which is the Starbase. This is what he does every summer in which they bring the students to the Hanscom Air Force Base. Usually Paul's the one driving the van there with the students onboard. There was also the six through eight summer enrichment at Medford High School. And then these previous, these slides right here are just showing some pictures of the students engaged in the programming. Here you can see the, I'm sorry, no, Dr. Cushing, do you mind just going back? Thank you. Here you can see the, the students at the Missatuck Elementary School. This is the in-service enrichment program where they, this one was about shark explorations. The next slide shows you also their field trip, the Missatuck students, to the Franklin Park Zoo and to the Children's Museum. On the next slide, Dr. Cushing. Thank you. And then the next slide has pictures of the middle school students in the Starbase Academy engaged in a physics activity. And then the next slide are the middle school students engaged in coding and chemistry. And then the final slide, our middle school summer enrichment at the Medford Public Library. The ESL Summer Program provides academic and enrichment opportunities to approximately 60 English language learners in grades K through 12 across the district. This provided students with the opportunity to increase their English language development in listening, speaking, writing and reading, as well as develop academic skills in math and science. These programs would not have been possible without the support of the Title III Grant and the following educators. May Abusan, Alexa Anizata, Laney Cahill, James Giddings, Florence Hamilton, Sabrina Jaeger, Megan Leclaire, Julia Mitchell, Nicola Napolitano, Joyce Nicholas, Peter Sipe and Max Walls. A special thanks to Anthony Patrellis, Max Walls, Patty Faggio, Nicola Napolitano and Natalia Cahill to provide the Summer Fund Camp opportunities in the afternoon. And I could try my best to answer any of those questions, but you may want to email Mr. Texera.
Mayor, member McLaughlin? Thank you. I probably will end up emailing Mr. Tishare as well, but just for the, for the community awareness, so that if anyone wants answers to these questions as well. I am curious about the hours again for the, for the programming, like what, do you know?
I'm not 100% sure. I know that the Starbase is a, that's a full day program. I know that the students meet here and, Dr. Cushing, do they still use the van from the? Okay, so they're, they're using the, one of the vocational vans to transport the students from here to Hanscom Air Force Base. So I know that's a full day program, we can get the hours for you.
Thank you. And then the other is sort of, I'm wondering, and, and again, this might be a question for Mr. Tishare, but also for Joan. How does it work when we, when there's intersectionality for, you know, maybe students that have ESY and are EL students?
So we work collaboratively, collaboratively to make sure that the students get their special education services, but also still have the ability to access the EL programming. So we have to look at what is the priority and if they have, you know, IEPs, then it would be making the tutoring work. So it might be later on in the afternoon if they have an activity that they want to participate. So Mr. Texera and I communicate a lot on how to make that work for students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one more. One more is Jump Start Music Camp. So this is an annual tradition now. So Jump Start Music Camp was back again this summer. They offered a two week instrumental camp at Medford High School with over 140 rising fourth to eighth grade students. Students strengthened their music skills and techniques while covering topics, including note reading, rhythm skills, sight reading, tuning, intonation and instrumental terminology. The next slide, Ms. Director of Performing Arts, Haley Rello, has wonderful pictures in here to capture some of the learning and performance that happened throughout the week. So the district supplies various string and percussion instruments to students participating in this program, free of charge for the duration of Jump Start Music. Also, for participation, students received free t-shirts and snacks each day. At the conclusion of the two week program, students presented their work in an end of camp showcase where families and friends came to the Karen Theater to watch them perform. Members of the High School Orchestra and Medford High School Marching Band also gave a special performance for the campers. And a special thanks goes to camp coordinator and performing arts coordinator Haley Rello, her extraordinary talented educators, which were Kristen Turner, Emma Baptiste and Sophia Chang. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have number six, which is also Ms. Suzanne Galusi, enrollment update, brief, brief enrollment update. Ms. Galusi is Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. And this will also be presented by Dr. Peter Cushing, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Enrichment and Innovation. Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. So we're happy to provide you very preliminary numbers. Once again, really need to thank Kim Miles. She's the one who built the format. Last year, we heard that you really enjoyed the format, shown how it was. I do want to say that because of some shifts in high school leadership, we don't have the CTE numbers right now. We've also made some shifts in our programming for CTE. So we will make sure that we have those for you at our first November meeting. We certify everything on or about August, I'm sorry, October 1st. And so we did see an influx in kindergarten classrooms, classrooms that I'll let Ms. Galusi speak to in a moment. But I wanted to make sure that we provided you this information as it comes in to us right now. Do you really want to thank Gabby in the Parent Information Center, Registration Center for all the work that she's doing onboarding students? But those are our initial numbers. And as you remember, last year, this was a brief presentation that we updated you on in the November timeframe as we, our numbers are really in flux and there's some churn, so. But on kindergarten.
I think the only thing I would add to what Dr. Cushing said is, as you know, kindergarten enrollment is monitored very carefully throughout the summer. And this year, towards the end of August, we had a week in which we had a significant increase in kindergarten enrollment. It was the week right before school was about to start, which was unfortunate timing. But due to that really large influx of registrations that week, across the city, we had to add an additional kindergarten section to every building. So now at the Brooks, the Roberts and the McGlynn, there are five kindergarten classes and you can see the numbers warrant that. And at the Missatuck, there are now four classes. They have three strands for nearly every grade. And as Dr. Cushing said, enrollment is, is flux and very fluid at this time of year. So hopefully we'll have a little bit more solid understanding, a little closer to the October 1st date. But if you have any questions, please let us know.
Mayor.
Member Russo?
I'm sure you are very excited to figure out how to add a section to every single building.
And every single schedule.
Hmm?
And every single schedule.
And they're, oh, yeah, I honestly cannot even imagine trying to do all that in a week. Am I correct that that means you also had to hire a teacher? And you were successful at that?
Yes, we were.
Well, I think that deserves recognition, like a week before school starts, you have to add four, find four kindergarten teachers, reorganize everything around schedules and the building and where they're going to be. And, and you manage that in a week. I, I just think that's remarkable and I'm glad you're on our team because.
Thank, thank you. It's the principals.
Okay.
The principals worked extremely tirelessly during this process and they actually collaborated. And so they helped joint interviews, all four together. Lisa Malone helped set up all of those lovely interviews. And in what we thought would be two days, but I think expanded to three days, they pretty much had back to back interviews and were able to be quite successful and all positions are filled.
That's fabulous, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Crats and then member Graham.
Yes, I thank you for the report. I just have a question if you're going to give the information in November. So in regard to the vocational technical high school, I got some calls and questions over the summer about the enrollment. And, and I wasn't sure, like, do we currently have a waitlist for Medford residents to, you know, to get enrolled into the vocational programs? That was something, you know, I wasn't sure of, I referred the families to the principal. So I'm wondering, when we get the report in November, can we get that information? And can we find out, like, are all Medford residents guaranteed a spot? You know, they might have to, they might not be in the program they want because maybe the numbers might change. But, you know, I, I never knew or haven't heard that there was a waitlist for Medford residents to be enrolled in the vocational programs. I just, I never heard that. So I'm just wondering if, you know, we can get that information with the November report.
We can definitely get that information. However, I, I do think it does bear really just a quick touch that across Massachusetts, there's been a real vibration towards, it's not, it's not like reinvigorated. I mean, the, the regional vocational technical schools, as an example, are heavily subscribed because of the program that they offer. That has now filtered into schools like Medford that is not a regional. But yes, there are, there are certain areas, you know, that are heavily subscribed and there are students on waitlists for certain programs. But I will definitely have more information on that moving forward. Because that's, there are, there are guidelines around how many students should be in a program related to the staffing. And again, it's a staffing space intersection.
Yeah, thank you. If that could be provided with it, that'd be great, thank you.
Member Graham?
Thank you. In a related question, I think the other sort of question I've, I've seen people raise when it comes to like, are Medford students on a waitlist? I think there's always an implied conclusion that we are waitlisting Medford kids in, so that we can take in kids from outside of Medford. And I actually feel like I've heard Principal Fallon say that that's not at all true. But when you provide the report, that includes that information. If you could also clarify that for people, because there's a lot of speculation about that. And I remember having a conversation with Chad a few months ago where he said he can't take in tuition anymore because his programs are full with Medford kids. So I took that to mean that we aren't taking students from outside of Medford as any sort of priority, especially if there were students on a waitlist in Medford.
That is 100% correct.
Okay, and if you could just quantify that in some way when you give the report so that the speculation can be corrected, that'd be amazing.
Yep.
And then the other comment I wanted to make, there are, at the elementary level, at the middle school level looks actually like slightly down this year, like in total enrollment from last year. Or maybe like about flat. But there are nine grade strands across our four buildings that have in excess of 90 students. And there is a point where the building simply cannot continue to handle more kids. When I interviewed the, the new interim director of finance, we talked a bit about enrollment projection as a starting point for the budget. And I'm excited that he will bring that lens to it because as long as I've, you know, been listening, I don't think we've ever discussed enrollment projection, but, you know, there's a lot of confluence there. There's, there's like, you know, facts and myths and concerns. And then there's like the real data in front of us that says there's nine, you know, there's nine grade strands that have more than 90 kids, which means five classrooms, not four. And I feel like those buildings were built for four, of, four of everything, and that's not what we have. So I think those enrollment projections will be really, really important as we go into budget planning. But I think we also need to start to think about, what do we, what do we do if this is a continuing trend versus like a blip in the radar as we recover from COVID? Because I think there's two different responses there.
I completely agree. And I think the, the swelling that we're seeing is primarily at two buildings. But also I think the McGlynn, they have the newcomer strand and that building has just three floors, not four floors. So there is a spacing issue at the McGlynn that the enrollment may not look the way the Roberts and the Brooks looks. But it also is pretty close, it's, it's at capacity because they've, there are only three, there's only three floors of that building. That makes sense. So I couldn't agree more. I'm very excited for the work of Mr. McHugh, it's definitely needed.
As, and through the chair, if you're finished, memoriam, just as, as we start the projections too, it seems these children were born right in the 2018, 2019 timeframe. You're looking at a huge baby boom in the next couple of years from the COVID pandemic. So I think we definitely need to do some assessment and coordinate, coordination with our planning on the fact that we're seeing five in each school except for one where there's four. You know, what are we going to do? We need to have six or, or seven, depending on this new baby boom. I don't even think it's been named yet, but the COVID pandemic boom comes to light in the next two years from now.
And the trend at the Roberts has been an additional section each year. So we, we have five firsts, we have five seconds. We didn't have to do five thirds this year, but that, those are numbers that we're monitoring constantly. And if, I know we presented to this committee, but we, with the incorporation of the library teachers, that role helped to alleviate some of the pressure, especially at the Roberts in their schedule. Because if we did not incorporate that position, then we're also at capacity scheduling wise, not just space and buildings, but scheduling wise for classrooms. So there's definitely a lot at play, but the enrollment at the elementary schools definitely will require some strategic planning moving forward. Mayor. Member Russo?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the pandemic baby boom or whatever it's going to be called. Because, you know, there's this, there's a sort of this four letter word in school committees around rezoning, redrawing the lines as to which kids go to which elementary school. It's a four letter word because it's utterly miserable for every single component, every person involved in the process. But it takes time to do that. It's not like you could just decide, oh, we're going to rezone for the spring, which obviously you couldn't do. But anyways, it takes a good amount of time to do it. And we have had the Missatuck with, I mean, right now it shows over 100 fewer kids than the Brooks and 100 and whatever that is, 100, almost 140 kids fewer than the Roberts. So we, I feel like it's been six years now where we talk about, what are we going to do about the Missatuck? There's nothing wrong with the Missatuck, it's a great school, that's where my kids went. But people are just not moving in there. And unless we have any kind of evidence that the baby boom happened to people just living in the Missatuck zone, we're going to be in real big trouble here. And one of the solutions is to rezone, which I know is a temporary solution. But if the baby boom is also temporary, then, you know, if it buys us another 10 years, that's okay. So I just something for the administration to think about because I don't really think school committees typically do the like, pass a motion saying, let's rezone. It's usually the superintendent who says, we can find no other path. We have 100 fewer kids here or 140 fewer kids here. The path forward is to rezone and let's just take the plunge. I'm not looking forward to it myself, but I also don't want you to come in here next fall and be like, well, we're going to rent some trailers at these three schools while we have. and be like, well, we're gonna rent some trailers at these three schools while we have, we don't have empty classrooms at the Missetook. But while we have so many fewer kids at a different school, because that would be a pretty awkward conversation. The committee's gonna be pretty unhappy with that. And as you just pointed out, enough lot changes in the days just before school starts. So if we need to rezone.
Does not have space for a trailer.
Yeah, we don't even have physical, well, get rid of parking anyways. That'll be a blast. But if we're going to need to rezone over the summer or whatever it is. I mean, we, we need to start thinking about that, you know, in the next couple of months. And I don't know how long that process normally takes. I've never done it and I actually never asked that question. And if anybody who's an educator here has been through it, is it a six month process? Is it a three year process? Like, I don't know, but we should probably get an answer to that soon so that we can get ahead of this. If the solution ends up being that we need to rezone so the Missetook gets more kids. So that, that's not a motion, just something I wanted to get out before I get too tired.
Thank you.
Mayor. Member McLaughlin?
Thank you. Thank you. And to that point, I mean, we have one school that is clearly at capacity. The Roberts School and, 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 you know, if that should fluctuate, what is the plan? But also what are their resource availability to that particular school? I, I know that we talk a lot about equity as part of our strategic plan and, you know, and meaning that equity is that everybody, you know, does not get the same, but that everybody gets what they need. It looks like clearly this school is in need and is at max capacity. And so how are we addressing, how is that being addressed?
So one of the conversations that we had with actually the teachers' union was around the potential need for maybe an additional building sub. Because part of the difficulties in terms of operationalizing the day and covering absences or needs as they arise throughout the day. All the buildings have or in process of hiring for a building sub. But also in the other buildings that aren't, that do not have this many sections. The specialist teachers have more availability in their schedule to help out in certain times of the day. Whereas the Roberts has very few flexibility. So the addition of maybe more coverage was part of the conversation. And this year, the Roberts Elementary School, as I know, I told the body last year. But Medford clearly has really shifted to the, the tale of two cities. And so the McGlynn and the Missetook qualify for Title One and the Roberts and the Brooks do not. So however, I'm maintaining three reading specialists at the Roberts. I'm not changing the level of staffing because of these shifts in enrollment. And there's just, you know, as you can see, more students there. So, and I think, as you know, and you'll get to see, Principal Kroll is quite an instructional leader who's already making some shifts in the way that instruction is viewed and discussed within the building. And I think that in combination of all of these, equity is always at, making sure students have everything they need is always the core of everything we do. But I think just some of those small shifts are, are ways that we're trying to support.
Thank you. So will we get an update in October to see where the numbers are? Or can we get an update?
Oh, yeah.
It'll be the first, it'll actually be the first meeting in October.
Okay. Member Hayes?
I'm just going back to the, the supports that you were talking about. Can you, can you remind us once again, so the reading specialists, how many are each school? Then I'm also curious about supports in terms of, again, when we look at the difference in numbers. Adjustment counselor support for things like lunch bunches and, you know, all of those things that are.
I can get you those numbers in terms of the, the counselors and all of that. The McGlynn has four reading specialists. One also takes care of our parochial students at St. Joseph's and St. Rayfield's that receive Title One services that are Medford residents. The Missetook has three full time. The Roberts right now has three. Because of the difference in enrollment and the Brooks has two.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have number eight presentations of the public and there are none listed. We have no continued business. We have a number of new business resolutions. First up, twenty twenty-three dash fifteen offered by Member Graham. Be resolved that the superintendent provide an update to the school committee on the implementation of newly adopted bullying, bullying policy no later than October second, twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved that the report include a description of efforts to educate building leaders on the new policy. How the policy has been disseminated to staff and percentage of staff participation and related professional development. Where the policy questions are raised that require consideration by the committee, how the policy is being communicated to families and the timing by which the district reports bullying data to DUCY whereby the school committee should expect an annual report. Member Graham? Thank you. We did work hard last year across, I think, I think five meetings and countless hours on the part of many members of the committee to redesign the, the bullying policy. A lot of the work that we did was to make it, in my mind, easier for families to understand the policy. And to, to me, make it clear who was responsible for the paperwork associated with filing a bullying report. And the answer to that is not the parent. That it is the clear responsibility of the district to complete paperwork if the parents are unable or unwilling to. And I want to have this report so we all can feel good that everything that we intended for this policy has come to fruition. And I think by that time, the visual that I know our communications director is working on to further boil down what is like fif- fourteen or fifteen pages into like a one pager or two pager or something like that should be done as well. So I was hoping that we can get that report in early October. We have motion for approval by Member Graham. Member McLaughlin?
Thank you. I just wanted to check in on the, on, you know, with the superintendent in terms of the starter school and that timeframe for the report. I know that, you know, for the policy, we had a report procedure. I, obviously, this is a high priority. I'm just wanting to check in with the superintendent on the feasibility of that for October second.
Yes, we are working with that date in August. We did do a rollout with administrators only. And so the administrative team, all administrators are aware of the, the changes, the newly adopted form by the committee. So we are working with that. All administrators are working with that documentation right now. So by the October second meeting, we should be able to present something to the committee because that's the documentation that we're using for this school year.
Great. Second. Motion for approval by Member Graham, seconded by Member McLaughlin. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Twenty twenty-three dash sixteen offered by Member Graham. Be resolved with the superintendent provider report of starter school operations at Medford High at the nine eighteen twenty twenty-three meeting. Be it further resolved, the report will include information regarding attendance, entardy rules and operational practices and sure timing parent notification. Be it further resolved, the report will include a recommended set of metrics, measurement by which the school committee can discern the effectiveness of the operational structure, staff attendance, compliance reporting, outreach calls as a percentage of reports, et cetera, and a recommended cadence of reporting to the school committee. Member Graham? Thank you. I know there has been a lot of work going on at Medford High this summer. And then in the opening days of school, I attended the meet the principals night last week because my daughter is a freshman. And I, A, was really pleased and impressed with the thoughtfulness with which Principal Cabral has been going through and reinstating rules that frankly have always been there and have never been enforced in many cases and adding clarifications where they're needed. And I know that there are lots of questions from the community on a continuing basis about adjusting to these new rules. So my hope was that we could get a report and sort of set that framework for folks to have a common understanding of what's happening. Particularly because we had so much discussion about what was not happening last year. It's important for us to know what is happening right now as a response. And I think the other thing I wanted to do was hear from you all, what you think that reporting cadence looks like to us and how we will be able to quantify that the things that we're saying are happening are in fact happening. Because I think that was one of the things that was so hard throughout last year was really to understand, like, we're saying that we're doing something, but we can't see it in any sort of like quantifiable way that it's actually happening. And I think with the entire new team on board, they'll have a lot of great ideas. But, you know, something as simple as like reporting kids absent or tardy to class, like, that sounds great. And it may be that there's no higher amount of tardy reports. And that could be because there's actually less kids being tardy to class. Or it could be that reports aren't being entered into the system. Or it could be some other reason. And I think what I want to understand from you all is how will you know that the things that you're putting in place are working? And what are you, what kind of metrics are you looking at that we also can have some visibility to on a regular cadence? So that's what I'm looking for, particularly specific to Medford High, given how much energy we have spent as a community and as a committee, sort of setting the stage for the success that we hope to see this year. Mayor. Member McLaughlin?
Thank you. All, I think, very important and valid information. I just want to ask maybe the, maybe the chair or the RPE, because I don't have it in front of me right now. But I do know that we implemented a, a procedure for a reporting request. And I just want to make sure that we're not inundating the, the, the administration and others with a lot of reporting requests and then have also other colleagues want additional reports and want to move forward in the same fashion and then have that same snowball that we had in the past where multiple people were asking for reports and a lot of folks were getting really frustrated because they were feeling like reports were happening all the time. To be clear, I think this is very important information and a report, you know, that is, is needed. I just want to qualify what the process is for asking for the reports based on our policy.
Mayor.
Member Rousseau?
So I do have the ad hoc report request procedure here. I will say that I also had this thought. I think that the key part of this current rule we have is that it's for ad hoc reports. And this is, I, Member Graham can correct me if I'm not interpreting it correctly. But this is really a request for, like, what is the report that the administration thinks we should get? Not, not even like, this is what we want. Like, tell us what you think should be in this report and how often. And we have a different policy for, for our, it's right in front of me. I'm trying, I'm blanking. It's called the annual reports and presentation schedules, policy CMA, where we list everything we're expected to get and how often, and sometimes exactly when. And so I feel like this item from Member Graham is, is really a request for a new report be designed to get onto this schedule. Because I, I don't really feel like I want to know this just once or twice because we've had a difficult last year. I mean, this seems like something we would just want to know, kind of in perpetuity. If like tardies start going up, the committee would see it in a report and we might be like, what's going on? Versus now where we wait for things to require parents to email or the media to show up. And then we say what's going on. So, but I could be wrong and I'll let Member Graham speak to what her intent is.
Yeah, I think there's two parts, right? The first is for Principal Cabral to be able to tell us a skinny down version of exactly what she has told lots of parents in all kinds of various forms and settings over the last couple of weeks. And I think that's really important because in the session that I was at last week, there was a parent in the room and he said, I don't even have a kid that goes to the high school, but I have a very young child and I'm interested in knowing more about what goes on at Medford High because I've heard a lot of bad things that go on here. And I'm trying to assess what else goes on here so I can think about that for my family. And I've had multiple people sort of describe that interest to me. So I think the first part of what I'm looking for is really, it's already done. Principal Cabral has talked about, you know, arriving to school on time and backpacks and outside food and lockers and, you know, she's talked about all of those things multiple times. And I wouldn't expect it to be any like big deal to talk about that again in some simple way for the committee and for the public that listens and watches. And then the second piece is not a report, but it's a request for you all to tell us how you are doing it so that, and what you recommend in terms of visibility for us. So it's not really a report request yet because I think we don't have the information to know exactly what is even possible to put in a report. But I think, I think Principal Cabral does and I think her team does and I think the superintendent does. And so the other part of this for next week would be just to understand what they recommend in terms of how we'll all feel good that this is working or if there's something that's happening that we know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yes, Member McLaughlin.
So, thank you, May. So I would just maybe make a, a suggestion for an amendment that instead of that, it be resolved that the superintendent report, provide a report of starter school operations that, you know, maybe it, it reads otherwise that they're providing recommendations on a, on an annual report that can be provided for starter school operations. Because I'm, I'm not, I think the provider report is confusing.
I, I'm just asking for a report like happens earlier in our agenda where it says, you know, the superintendent has five reports. That's what I mean. That's all. Just an update. It can make it a yearly thing for the starter school, but I think this one is extremely important. Yeah, I don't even think I want it yearly. Like, I actually don't want us to have to talk about this every year because I want to know that our high school is like in good shape and we have rules and we follow them. And that's a this year thing. I don't think that is something that has to happen in perpetuity. So let's just start with this year. Next week, hopefully, is next week good? Okay, we'll get an update. I think that, that would be helpful for me. I'm hearing very good things from parents on this new cell phone policy. Kids aren't as happy. But I want to know what that, what that means. So I think it'll be very beneficial. We, we're glad you're setting down the law. And I think that's best for our kids. So I'm excited to hear more. Motion for approval by Member Graham, seconded by Member Rousseau. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We have offered by Member Rousseau, twenty twenty-three seven dash seventeen, resolution on the status of the policies of the Memphis School Committee. Whereas the policies of the Memphis School Committee can only be enforced when they are known to the current members, administration of the schools and the public. Whereas the Memphis School Committee pays annual dues to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to maintain our online policy manual. And where a significant time is invested in drafting and passing policy now therefore be it resolved with the Memphis School Committee. Number one acknowledges that the policy manual maintained in the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Policy Service represents the full extent of the district policies, except for policies adopted since January first, twenty twenty, that have yet to be uploaded. Number two requires the superintendent to ensure all policies adopted since January one, twenty twenty are uploaded to the policy service by December first, twenty twenty-three. Number three rescinds all policies adopted by the Memphis School Committee before January one, twenty twenty, that were not uploaded to the policy service. Number four requests that the superintendent ensures that all policies adopted by this body are uploaded to the policy service within thirty days of adoption. And agrees that resolutions passed in regular school committee meetings are not policies. Should a resolution need to be codified as policy, the member offering a resolution will draft an official policy document. The drafted policy document will be subject to review consistent with the policy adoption as outlined in the Medford School Committee rules. Member Rousseau?
Thank you, Mayor. So as every member here and probably every member since the policy services existed and certainly many parents and staff have known that the, if you go to the policy service that we have online and you do a search for something that's interesting you for a particular moment in time, you'll find something. you'll find something in there probably. You may discover that it is, the language suggests that it was written in the eighteenth century sometimes. It is so obviously not possibly the correct thing that could even be legal. And there are many policies that fall into this category. And so the challenge for school committees is, you know, policymaking is really our biggest responsibility. And if we don't even know what the policies are, it's kind of hard to update and change them. And so this, there's, there's several items in here, one of which is sort of drawing a line in the sand. And by the way, January first, twenty twenty was in fact completely arbitrary. But I felt like there has to be a line drawn somewhere. And so I picked that one. So obviously, if the committee feels strongly about a different date, I'm open to discussing that, of course. But the, I received some interesting advice. This is probably just before the pandemic when I talked to people in person back then, from several school committee members. And I don't even remember what we were talking about. Oh, we were talking about what happens if somebody like in nineteen seventy-eight at a school committee meeting passed, said something aloud and then it became seven votes and that was the motion that passed. Technically, that is the policy of the school committee since nineteen seventy-eight and not a soul knows what that was. And frankly, most of the time that doesn't matter. But I believe it was Newton that had the situation where they did all of this work and I don't even remember the topic. But after they'd completed all of this work, it was like a year of effort. Somebody said, oh, but there was a school committee motion made, you know, like a decade ago. And it literally undid everything they had done because they didn't know. So the advice that I got from a couple of people, one of which had been a chair in more than one community was you need to draw the line every time you start a new session. You say the policies are what they are. And if something should have been added to the policy manual but didn't, you've, you've got to just put the stamp of approval and say, our policies are this. And we've never done that in Medford. And I don't, I'm not suggesting most communities do, but I don't want it to bite us. And I'm particularly concerned because we do have so many policies that are so outdated. And to think that many of those policies did not arrive at another school committee meeting in the eighties or the nineties. And, you know, perfectly good intentioned members made a motion to change the policy from this to that. And everybody was excited and said yes, and everybody left the room. And it's in the minutes in a, in a drawer somewhere in the archives at Medford High. And it is nowhere else. What, what good does that do us? So that's what this is really all about, is saying, we've got to get serious about what are our policies. And I think this puts pressure on us to make sure that if we have some motion or policy change that it actually ends up somewhere other than in our memories. And then the other part is, number five is in fact a change procedurally, which, that we don't have a procedure. So it's, it's really sort of a new procedure. But if a member comes here and, you know, you've looked up a policy you want to change and you make a motion and it gets changed, a, a resolution to change something, you are responsible for looking at our policy manual and seeing, is there any policies that are relevant? We're a policymaking body. We don't have a staff of like the, the state house or the federal government, federal legislatures of people that work for us to individually go do that work. So if you want to make a policy to change something and you bring a resolution and you work on it and you write it, it's beautiful and we all agree. Your next step is to go find the policies that need to be changed to reflect that. And then bring them to the body so that they can be sent to the appropriate subcommittee to be worked on. So it, it's not a small change. But every time I go into our policy manual, I get more and more depressed, really, really depressed. And at some point, we, we, we're responsible for that and we've not been responsible for it. So it's time that we just decide, you know, and this, this thirty day thing, like when we change a policy, the superintendent has to know it's urgent that it gets uploaded because it gets lost in Google Docs or in emails. So that's what this is about. Thank you.
Member McLaughlin.
Thank you. So I hear you on the, on the procedural piece in terms of, you know, and being a member of the, the Rules Policy and Equity Subcommittee. I, I understand, you know, the, the level of need for making sure that we have a process. And I think so much of what we've been doing, certainly in the past four years that I've been here, is about identifying the need for process and creating those. So I think that's important. And I hear you on, you know, one through four. I also, on five, I have some questions about it. I, I think that, you know, should a resolution need to be codified as policy? The member offering the resolution will draft an official policy document. Do we have an official policy document that we're drafting, number one? And number two, how is a member knowing that a resolution needs to be codified as policy? So part of the issue, I think, and we're going back to process again. But part of the issue historically, in my experience and certainly in the times that I spent, the years that I spent on the other side watching this body, was that a lot of times there's not professional development, there's not training, there's not orientation, there's not all of the things that need to happen when you are onboarding new individuals, new staff, myself included. You know, you learn vicariously, you learn in, in any number of ways. But we require training to be able to understand, in my opinion, and not just self-taught training, to be able to understand truly, you know, what is the difference between a resolution and what is the difference between codification of policy? And I would request that that be an MASC training that we are offered through the MASC so that we're further understanding, how do we differentiate between those and what are we doing to differentiate between those? Additionally, and I know that we've had motions from last, end of last year that frankly need to be gone through to, I need to go through to check on the status of and, and look at where we're at calendar wise for those where we talked about school committee onboarding and the creation of onboarding and training and so on and so forth, which clearly needs to happen. So those are my thoughts on the matter. I, I, I think that obviously policy is important and I couldn't agree more that I think that things fall through the cracks and we think that, or perhaps folks think that we make a motion and, you know, then it's therefore implemented. And we do not know whether in fact it is being implemented or not until perhaps we hear from a community member or somebody in the schools or otherwise that it is or is not. So I see the need. I, I think that, I, I think that we need some professional training and development with the Mass Association for School Committees around the matter. Because I do feel like for folks who are watching and listening and don't necessarily know in terms of the upload, member Rousseau is talking about, you know, the Massachusetts Associate, Association of School Committees has a standard policy that they offer to all school committees and then school committees can modify those policies as they see fit. And those policies are all sort of uploaded to the MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees and to our particular website. And the MSC, MASC and the folks there have been doing this work for quite some time. And we have a representative for Medford Public Schools at the MASC that does offer us training. So I would put that out to the rest of the committee.
Mayor. Thank you. I do want to just clarify what policy document means. I mean, for many of our existing policies, they're literally just a paragraph or a sentence. So that is the policy document. I, I don't know why I included the word document. It's kind of strange. I could have just said policy. I was just trying to make it clear that it was a thing versus, you know, traditionally and frankly, every vote we make that is four out of seven votes is the policy of the district. Which means that in every meeting, we're passing policy nonstop. And, you know, if we're approving the acceptance of an Acura, like it doesn't need to end up in the policy service. But if we're changing the minimum or the, the, the operations or operations, but the policy. And it's hard to find another word for policy other than policy. But if we're changing the policies and then we don't update, I mean, I know you're not disagreeing at all. But if we don't, somebody has to be responsible from taking that and then going and doing the digging and saying, where, where does that? You know, I think back to the, I think it was June about the, the inclusion statement. And I'm going to bet that there are multiple policies where that is actually somehow integrated into those policies. And like, that was a lot of good work. And unless it ends up on the policy service, you know, once all of us have moved on and forgotten, it's gone too. Yeah. So, and that was the first one that came to mind for me as well. So, so that's all I mean by drafting. Most of the time drafting a new policy does not mean typing from scratch. Although that does happen too. That's actually tends to be easier because you just Google around to other communities who've tried to do that and you have a good start. But for the existing policies, those ones can be a little tricky because it's one sentence and we want to make it seven pages long. You know, that, that's a big change. So, thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. And I would, yeah, I would add that I think that part of the issue too is the, is the language around the policy and, you know, policies, if you will, in the manual and making sure that these are also community friendly and in simplified language. And there's a whole series of things. My concern about some of this is that if there's one committee, for example, the Rules Policy and Equity Subcommittee, and there are three people on that subcommittee and everything that we are, you know, not everything, but many of the things that we are making motions and voting on that essentially are, could be determined to be policy, if you will. If they're then getting referred to subcommittee so that they can be discussed to then come back to the table to be passed as, you know, quote unquote, official policy, we're talking about a three-step process now to be able to get anything moving forward. And I, again, would like to hear from my colleagues on that comment. Thank you.
Graham.
So I don't think there's an actual requirement that the Rules and Policy Subcommittee be the only place where rules are written. I think our rules actually say that that's not true. So any subcommittee could take on a policy update. And then when it comes back to the floor, it has to be read twice before it is sort of codified. So those, that's what our rules say about create, the creation of policy. When I think about the difference between like, we make resolutions all the time, not all of them are policy. Like, yeah, there, there are policies, but like, we're not going to codify a request for the principal of the high school to come on October, on, you know, on September nineteenth or whatever it is. Like, that's not a policy. But to the, to the extent that like something we're doing actually changes how operations happen, that it, that is potentially a policy. So I, I think the vast majority of what we do doesn't fall into this bucket, but there are a handful of things that probably should and just haven't. And the unfortunate part of that is it just sort of like lays this groundwork for like, well, if I just go dig out something I liked better, I can sort of play gotcha with the committee and say, you know, this is, you know, this is what you said and this isn't what you said and all that good stuff. So I think, you know, but to the point of like wanting some training, I would second this motion with a friendly amendment with a number six that agrees to, that says, agrees to invest in professional development for committee members to ensure
differentiation, maybe?
Maybe just to ensure practice, our, our school committee practices around policy development and adoption are in line with best practice.
Mayor.
Member McLaughlin.
Thank you. I appreciate the recommended amendment around professional development. And I think that now this begs the question, maybe it doesn't for my other colleagues, but it definitely does for me. Where, you know, I want to go back to the past four years on all of the motions that I made. And we collaborated on that were passed to see, okay, what needed to be codified in policy and what didn't? Are they actually happening or are they not? And so I think that when we're talking about a cutoff and we're begging that question, I think it's an important question. So how are we addressing things that have already occurred? And, you know, each of us as members and that responsibility for, you know, obviously, you know, motions that we had passed or collaborated on that had been agreed upon that may need to be codified as policy.
I, I think that would be a good question to work out in when we do professional development with a policy expert. Yeah, and I think this leaves it open to do that because the date is January one, twenty twenty and beyond. So we would have to, I don't think we're going to figure that out tonight, but I think that deserves a whole nother hour discussion, potentially in committee or during PD.
Mayor.
Member McLaughlin and member Rousseau.
Yeah, so I would ask that the professional development be offered after the inauguration in January. So I would just add that to the amendment.
Motion for approval by member Rousseau as amended by member Graham, as further amended by member McLaughlin.
I just have a quick point.
Member Rousseau, one quick point and then we're going to do.
Then we can end this. Sorry. In fact, anybody can put something straight on here to a change of policy with no subcommittees ever. That's perfectly fine too. So, and I do recommend that in you're digging through policies and you find something, you're like, oh my God. Like, it's so bad. Just rewrite the sentence and send it here, even if you're not changing the policy substantially. Because at least we can then get our metadata about last amended, when it needs to be changed and all that on to the policies. Sorry, I'll stop talking.
Okay, motion as amended. Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Last resolution offered by member Graham, twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, be resolved that the superintendent will provide a draft of her recommended goals to the Memphis School Committee for discussion at the ten to twenty twenty-three school committee meeting. Motion for approval by member Graham, if that's okay with the superintendent, seconded by member McLaughlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no reports requested. We do have several condolences, so thank you for bearing with me. The Medford School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of John J. Jack McLaughlin, father of John McLaughlin, director of building grounds for the Memphis Public Schools. Mr. McLaughlin served both our city honorably for thirty-seven years as a Memphis police officer and the, in the United States Marines during the Korean conflict. Memphis School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of Joe Ann Anzaloni, wife of the Mustang girls softball coach, Mike Anzaloni. Memphis School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of Debbie Corletto, a former lifelong, sorry, a former longtime art teacher at the McGlynn Middle School. Memphis School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of Vida Regan, a former elementary teacher at the Hervey School. Also, the Memphis School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of John Sarami, father of Jay Sarami, co-chairperson of the Mustang Field of Dreams Committee. And the Medford School Committee expresses its sincere condolences to the family of Clarinda Lindy Saragosa, a former health and physical education teacher for the Memphis Public Schools and an outstanding student athlete who is enshrined in both the Mustang Hall of Fame and the Hall of Fame at Boston University. If we all may rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next meeting is September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, which is next Monday, six PM. Regular school committee meeting in the Howard Alden Memorial Chambers, Memphis City Hall, in addition to Zoom. Motion to, don't forget to sign up for Run Medford. And we also, we have a number of events coming up. Maybe we can announce them on September eighteenth. Oh, I can give you a list for your superintendent update. Member McLaughlin moves for adjournment, seconded by member Rousseau. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, everybody.